Good morning, everyone. It's September 4th. I hope everyone had a great holiday period. And we're starting our planning board meeting. The first item this morning is adoption of resolutions. We have four this morning. All commissioners are eligible except Mr. Bartley on these four items. So the first resolution is Bergfield Track Preliminary Plan Number 1, 2024-0130, MCPB Number 25-096. The second is Bergfield Track Forest Conservation Plan F 2024-1050, MCPB Number 25-097. The third is 7070 Arlington Road Preliminary Plan Amendment Number 1, 1998-051B, MCPB Number 25-098. And the last is 7070 Arlington Road Sketch Plan Amendment Number 3, 2021-010A, MCPB Number 25-099. Do I have a motion for approval of these four resolutions?
Yeah, move to adopt resolutions.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's three zero one. The next is adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes this morning. The first, all commissioners can vote. And the second one, Mr. Bartley cannot vote on that one. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 24, 2025?
Move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bartley. All in favor?
Aye.
I have it four zero. The last is July, minutes of July 31, 2025. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's three zero one. The next is adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes this morning. The first, all commissioners can vote. And the second one, Mr. Bartley cannot vote on that one. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 24, 2025?
Move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bartley. All in favor?
Aye.
I have it four zero. The last is July, minutes of July 31, 2025. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There's three zero one. The next is other preliminary matters. This is the Fairlands-Brixton-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee appointment of new members, where the staff is recommending that the planning board appoint selected candidates to fill three vacancies to the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee. And is there, oh, is there a presentation on this this morning? Welcome. Thank you. You have Ms. Sophie Kotscher.
Good morning. For the record, Sophie Kotscher, East County Master Plan Team. Today, we are asking that the board appoint three new members and one new alternate member to the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee. This plan was formally located in the Up County Planning Region and is now located in the East County Planning Region after the reorganization. And as part of that transition, I will now be the planning point of contact for the committee. As a reminder, the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Master Plan was approved by the County Council in December of 2023, which updated the 1997 Fairland Master Plan. The master plan area is a fairly tight corridor along a five-mile stretch of Route 29 and Columbia Pike, focusing on a few neighborhoods and commercial areas along the highway there, comprising of about 1,800 total acres. The 2023 master plan vision is to facilitate an evolving and connected suburban corridor with compact activity centers that support a healthy local economy and multicultural community that is socially connected and environmentally resilient. This Venn diagram on the slide shows a summary of elements of the plan: a resilient environment, accessible food system, connected trails and pathways, compact development, and an enhanced bus rapid transit system that already exists along Route 29. Central to all of these things is to have racial equity and social justice in this area and part of the county. One of the means to do, to reach these goals was to form this committee, which was formed last year, and to have the committee focus on advancing master plan goals. The 2023 master plan recommended the establishment of a community advisory committee to help realize the community-centered aspects of the plan that would work in coordination with the Eastern Montgomery Regional Services Center to build greater community understanding, advocacy, and engagement in the planning process, public improvements, and overall community health and well-being. This recommendation was implemented and now exists as the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee. The planning board first appointed the first 11 members to form the committee last summer on July 25, 2024. The committee held their first meeting on September 25, 2024, and has since met nine times to establish officers and committee rules and regulations, learn from planning staff on the content of the master plan, and set a course for master plan implementation. Current priorities of the committee include supporting a healthy community food system and advocating for a continuous network of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Over the past year, three committee members have resigned. A call for letters of interest was in place between June 2 and June 20 of 2025 via the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Master Plan Subscription e-letter. Candidates were asked to submit a brief letter highlighting their interest in serving on the committee and any relevant experience echoing the process that took place in 2024 to select the initial committee members. A total of four candidate letters were received and were shared as an attachment to this item's staff report. Candidates were selected for recommendation for appointment based on a variety of factors to ensure a well-rounded group of individuals, including the relationship to the plan area and surrounding community, diversity in age, gender, background, and experiences, affiliation or prior experience on other boards and committees such as the East County Citizens Advisory Board or local neighborhood associates. Once the committee members are appointed, we will schedule an initial orientation meeting to establish meeting procedures and bylaws. As shown on the screen, we are recommending that the planning board appoint the three listed candidates to serve three-year terms on the committee. We are also recommending to appoint one alternate member that would be eligible to automatically fill any vacancies that arise within the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kotscher, for your detailed presentation. I have no questions. I'm delighted that you were able to find these four qualified candidates. So thank you so much. And do I have any questions or comments from my fellow board members?
I'm excited for this committee. I used to live in that area, and I frequent it now because of my children's sports activities and family members that live there. And I look forward to their input in improving this community. Thanks.
Hearing no other comments, do I have a motion to approve Kelly Hudson, Michelle Armstead, and Rondellin Cox as committee members for three years and alternate member, Roberta Goldberg?
Yeah, move to approve the recommended committee members.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have it four zero. Now we go to our last item, regulatory extension requests. We have three this morning. The first is Catman-John Park Preliminary Plan Extension Request Number Two. The second is Bartlett Road Properties Extension Request Number Two, MCPB Number 25-064, and correction of resolution Alfred House-Cashell Road Final Forest Conservation Plan Amendment Number F 2025-012A-MCPB Number 25-065. Do I motion for approval of these two corrected resolutions?
Yeah, move to approve the corrected resolutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's three zero one. The next is adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes this morning. The first, all commissioners can vote. And the second one, Mr. Bartley cannot vote on that one. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 24, 2025?
Move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bartley. All in favor?
Aye.
I have it four zero. The last is July, minutes of July 31, 2025. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's three zero one. The next is other preliminary matters. This is the Fairlands-Brixton-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee appointment of new members, where the staff is recommending that the planning board appoint selected candidates to fill three vacancies to the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee. And is there, oh, is there a presentation on this this morning? Welcome. Thank you. You have Ms. Sophie Kotscher.
Good morning. For the record, Sophie Kotscher, East County Master Plan Team. Today, we are asking that the board appoint three new members and one new alternate member to the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee. This plan was formally located in the Up County Planning Region and is now located in the East County Planning Region after the reorganization. And as part of that transition, I will now be the planning point of contact for the committee. As a reminder, the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Master Plan was approved by the County Council in December of 2023, which updated the 1997 Fairland Master Plan. The master plan area is a fairly tight corridor along a five-mile stretch of Route 29 and Columbia Pike, focusing on a few neighborhoods and commercial areas along the highway there, comprising of about 1,800 total acres. The 2023 master plan vision is to facilitate an evolving and connected suburban corridor with compact activity centers that support a healthy local economy and multicultural community that is socially connected and environmentally resilient. This Venn diagram on the slide shows a summary of elements of the plan: a resilient environment, accessible food system, connected trails and pathways, compact development, and an enhanced bus rapid transit system that already exists along Route 29. Central to all of these things is to have racial equity and social justice in this area and part of the county. One of the means to do, to reach these goals was to form this committee, which was formed last year, and to have the committee focus on advancing master plan goals. The 2023 master plan recommended the establishment of a community advisory committee to help realize the community-centered aspects of the plan that would work in coordination with the Eastern Montgomery Regional Services Center to build greater community understanding, advocacy, and engagement in the planning process, public improvements, and overall community health and well-being. This recommendation was implemented and now exists as the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Implementation Advisory Committee. The planning board first appointed the first 11 members to form the committee last summer on July 25, 2024. The committee held their first meeting on September 25, 2024, and has since met nine times to establish officers and committee rules and regulations, learn from planning staff on the content of the master plan, and set a course for master plan implementation. Current priorities of the committee include supporting a healthy community food system and advocating for a continuous network of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Over the past year, three committee members have resigned. A call for letters of interest was in place between June 2 and June 20 of 2025 via the Fairland and Bricks-Cheney Master Plan Subscription e-letter. Candidates were asked to submit a brief letter highlighting their interest in serving on the committee and any relevant experience echoing the process that took place in 2024 to select the initial committee members. A total of four candidate letters were received and were shared as an attachment to this item's staff report. Candidates were selected for recommendation for appointment based on a variety of factors to ensure a well-rounded group of individuals, including the relationship to the plan area and surrounding community, diversity in age, gender, background, and experiences, affiliation or prior experience on other boards and committees such as the East County Citizens Advisory Board or local neighborhood associates. Once the committee members are appointed, we will schedule an initial orientation meeting to establish meeting procedures and bylaws. As shown on the screen, we are recommending that the planning board appoint the three listed candidates to serve three-year terms on the committee. We are also recommending to appoint one alternate member that would be eligible to automatically fill any vacancies that arise within the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kotscher, for your detailed presentation. I have no questions. I'm delighted that you were able to find these four qualified candidates. So thank you so much. And do I have any questions or comments from my fellow board members?
I'm excited for this committee. I used to live in that area, and I frequent it now because of my children's sports activities and family members that live there. And I look forward to their input in improving this community. Thanks.
Hearing no other comments, do I have a motion to approve Kelly Hudson, Michelle Armstead, and Rondellin Cox as committee members for three years and alternate member, Roberta Goldberg?
Yeah, move to approve the recommended committee members.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I, the I's have it four zero. Now we go to our last.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bartley was, the intention was for him to abstain on that one.
I'm sorry.
And so I'm guessing if Commissioner Hedrick would be so kind to second that motion.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. And just so you know, in the event that two of you second something in the absence of the vice chair, whose official duty is to second motions and preside when the chair is not here, whichever one of you I hear first gets recorded as the second. So just in case you were wondering about that. But thank you. So we have, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hedrick, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say Commissioner Bartley has the advantage. I've got like a slight voice delay here.
That's what we're dealing with today. So he's been recorded several times in lieu of you. I hate to tell you that. So we have Commissioner Linden having made that motion, Commissioner Hedrick having seconded, and then three zero one.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for keeping us straight.
I do my best.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to go to last item on the preliminary matters is item number three, regulatory extension request. We have three this morning. The first is Catman-John Park Preliminary Plan Extension Request Number Two. The second is Bartlett Road Properties Extension Request Number Two for Preliminary Plan and Preliminary/Final Forest Conservation Plan. And the third is 7025 Strathmore Street Regulatory Extension Review Number One. All three staffers recommending approval of the extension request. So do I have a motion for approval of these three extension requests?
Yeah, move to approve all three extension requests.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, the I's have it four zero. So we're going to take a two-minute break and start with our next item, item number five, the Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrades Mandatory Referral MR 2025-023 City of Tacoma Park, where staff is recommending transmitting comments to the City of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
And do I have any questions or comments from my fellow board members?
I'm excited for this committee. I used to live in that area and I frequent it now because of my children's sports activities and family members that live there, and I look forward to their input in improving this community. Thanks.
Well, hearing no other comments, do I have a motion to approve Kelly Hudson, Michelle Armstead, and Rhonda Lynn Cox as committee members for three years and, and alternate member, Roberta Goldberg?
Yeah, move to approve the recommended committee members?
Second.
All second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it four zero. Thank you so much. And we will now go to our regulatory extension items. Oh, we have, that's right, I'm sorry. We have a couple of corrected resolutions. There are two this morning, correction of resolution only acres, preliminary plan amendment number one, 2022007A, MCPB number 25064, and corrected correction of resolution Alfred House, Cachelle Road, Final Forest Conservation Plan, amendment number F 2025012A dash MCPB number 25 dash 065. Do I motion for approval of these two corrected resolutions?
Yeah, move to approve the corrected resolutions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it four zero. Now we go to our last.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bartley was, the intention was for him to abstain on that one.
I'm sorry.
And so I'm guessing if, if Commissioner Hedrick would be so kind to second that motion.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. And just so you know, in the event that two of you second something in the absence of the vice chair, whose official duty is, is to second motions and preside when the chair is not here, whichever one of you I hear first gets recorded as the second. So just in case you were wondering about that.
Okay.
But thank you. So we have Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hedrick, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say Commissioner Bartley has the advantage. I've got like a slight voice delay here.
That's what we're dealing with today, so he's been recorded several times in lieu of you. I hate to tell you that. So we have Commissioner Linden having made that motion, Commissioner Hedrick having seconded, and then three zero one.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for keeping us straight.
I do my best.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna go to last item under preliminary matters is item number three, regulatory extension request. We have three this morning. The first is Catman John Park Preliminary Plan Extension Request Number Two. The second is Bartlett Road Properties Extension Request Number Two for Preliminary Plan and Preliminary slash Final Forest Conservation Plan. And the third is 7025 Strathmore Street Regulatory Extension Review Number One. All three staff is recommending approval of the extension requests. So do I have a motion for approval of these three extension requests?
Yeah, move to approve all three extension requests?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it four zero. So we're gonna take a two-minute break and start with our next item, item number five, the Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrades Mandatory Referral MR 2025023 City of Tacoma Park, where staff is recommending transmitting comments to the City of Tacoma Park. Thank you. Good morning. We're on item number five, the Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrades Mandatory Referral Number MR 2025023 City of Tacoma Park, where staff is recommending transmitting comments to the City of Tacoma Park. I will first turn it over to David Anspacher, and then he'll turn it over to Sophia Aldrich, who's presenting this item this morning. So welcome, Mr. Anspacher.
Thank you, welcome back. I just, I wanted to just take a second to recognize that Alex Rixie is now serving in the acting supervisor role for the multimodal transportation division. We're super excited to have him in that role, and so you'll be seeing him a lot today.
Thank you so much, welcome, and congratulations.
All right, for the record, Sophia Aldrich from Transportation Planning Division, here to present mandatory referral review of the Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrades within the City of Tacoma Park. Today, joining me are Devin McNally from the City of Tacoma Park and Casey Anne Webly, and then their consultants, Emily Martin and Rob Gillespie from RKK. So a quick agenda, we're gonna go through, you know, talk a little bit about the project area and some of the existing, I guess, features of the Met Branch Trail, and then look at some of the proposed improvements within the corridor. We'll then go talk to master plan conformity and transportation best practices, and then environmental analysis, historic preservation, Parks Department, and recommendations. All right, to start with, and I apologize, the bullets are a little, a little tough here, but this is, this is less than a half a mile within the City of Tacoma Park, essentially runs along a portion of Fenton Street and then Tacoma Avenue. And you start, you start up in Silver Spring in Tacoma Park and then also at the DC line. But it's a very important part of the trail as well. And it, this trail is almost entirely adjacent to the red line slash CSX, and so there's definitely some space constraints on the west side of, of this, both, both streets. The proposed improvements look to upgrade the, the current trail to meet, to meet guidelines and standards and improve safety, comfort, and connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists. In addition, the project has included opportunities to implement stormwater best practice, best management practices as part of the design, and, which I think is a great part of this plan, is that the project is proposing lighting along Tacoma Avenue, which would make this entire section of the Met Branch Trail lighted. All right, so along, along this area of the trail, certainly the north part of the trail along Fenton Street runs along Montgomery College, the Student Union Building, and the, the Leggett Center. And in general, there's residential and municipal parkland along the east side of Tacoma Avenue. And as I said, the, you know, the, the red line right of way, in some places, this trail hugs, hugs this right of way very closely, and in some, some places, there's a nice tree buffer. So I'm gonna show you some photos, starting at the north. You can see the existing overpass that, that goes over the rail, you know, owned by Montgomery College, which connects over to the park on the other side. And this current cross-section is about 72 feet wide, the existing branch trail. Here is, I believe, about 11 feet wide, and the buffer, the buffer is not bad, and you know, it's six feet here. But as you can see, it's really close up, up against the right of way. This, this is the section, second section of, of Fenton Street, pretty much adjacent to the, the Leggett Center. This is the most constrained part of the entire corridor. The right of way here is only 50 feet wide. So things are pretty tight here, and, you know, actually, we estimate that the sidewalk that was built is operating in easement that, you know, it's outside of this 50-foot right of way. And here, the rail right of way is very, very close to the edge. So there's def, this is the place where there's the most limitation in, in terms of what can be done. Now we have a photo of Tacoma Avenue, and this is a part of it, I think, south of Buffalo Avenue. As you can see, this part has parking on it. Other parts of the street further north do not, but definitely much different character. And again, the, you know, the, the red line is to the left of this photo, but you can't see it because there's almost a 20-foot tree buffer, and there's residential homes on the right. And here, the right of way is about 79 feet wide. So there's quite a lot of room. The master plan right of way for both streets is 80 feet. So, you know, certainly, I would say that both of these streets are pretty close to, to meeting it. Fenton Street definitely is one place where there's, there, there are some constraints to, to achieving that. So the proposed cross-section for this project is essentially a very consistent 11-foot shared use path with, you know, with improved surface and improved buffers. There are so, many places along the trail, especially up, and up along Fenton Street, where the, the path is only 10 feet wide. And so when this project is done, the trail will be almost a consistent 11, in some places 12 feet wide. In, in the vicinity of Buffalo Avenue on Tacoma Avenue, the buffer between the Met Branch Trail and Tacoma Avenue will be quite narrow. And those of you who remember, there used to be a wooden fence out there, which sort of fell into disrepair, and that was taken out the last series of improvements that were done by the city. And now, through that section, a bikeway barrier made out of metal is proposed to replace it. Also, as part of this project, there are some intersection improvements at the intersection of Fenton Tacoma Avenue. Essentially, some widened sidewalk from the trail connection will, will be made. A bus stop location will be, will be moved slightly, and, you know, certainly, the, you know, all of the, many of the corners will be improved. We'll mention that the northeastern intersection corner only has one curb ramp within this design to serve two crosswalks, which is now, for Montgomery County, non, non-standard. The intersection of Tacoma Avenue at Buffalo Avenue has quite a lot of improvements. And the first one is, and I'm gonna slide my cursor over here. There we go. There is an existing speed table and crosswalk located south of Buffalo Avenue, which, if you've driven around Tacoma Park, it's pretty standard, it's actually a pretty nice one. That one is going to be removed, and the crosswalk is going to be eliminated. And in its place, a new crosswalk and a connection will be constructed on the north side of Buffalo Avenue. So this will be a raised, a raised crosswalk, which is pretty much bringing in something that's sort of a mid-block crossing and making it more part of the intersection. In addition, some, the bus stop location, which is now here, will be moved to be more proximate to the intersection and connect to the crosswalk directly to this location here. And the red, the red lines in the drawing are the bicycle barrier. It's not the entire extent. I think this is the southern extent here. It goes a little further to the north from this drawing. Stay with me while I undo. There we go. All right, now, looking at master plan conformity, you know, we start with the over, you know, the overarching area master plan, which is the 2001 Tacoma Park Master Plan. We definitely found this project to be consistent with the broad transportation vision of this master plan. Now we go to the bicycle, the 2018 Bicycle Master Plan, and, you know, in looking at the project, we, we definitely conclude the project makes substantial improvements to the Met Branch Trail, but is not fully consistent with the Bicycle Master Plan recommendations for breezeways. This is one of our breezeways. It's a very important regional connective trail. You know, but on the flip side, we know that there are some major constraints here to achieving that. So it's inconsistent in a couple areas. First is it does not achieve five-feet or greater buffer between the breezeway and the street for the entire extent. There is no separation between bicycles and pedestrians due to space constraints. And I don't know if you remember, but breezeways are actually supposed to be bike, a bikeway and a pedestrian way, sometimes actually with some type of, of, of buffer or striping. And they can be as wide as 16 to 18 feet, and here, there's just not room for that. The trail is consistent with the Bicycle Master Plan in that areas where there is a narrow buffer, a bicycle barrier, it has been proposed. It's also consistent in that the, the trail width is going to be more standardized, and with the bike width of, with the trail width of 11 to 12 feet, it's wide enough for side-by-side travel, which is great. However, the proposed trail does not meet public street standards, which is something that is defining the Bicycle Master Plan, but I'm gonna just take a second to sort of explain it. Trails are, are designed to a different standard. They don't have to carry the weight of cars and trucks. And as a result, sometimes trails can get disrupted by, you know, tree roots uplifting. The Bicycle Master Plan really focused on the need for breezeways to be essentially bicycle highways. And for that, for that, it required a, more of a focus on the surface and the subsurface, so that it actually was as if it was a piece of the street, which would be a similar standard that you would see in a protected bicycle lane, for instance. So that has not been, been achieved. We'd love to see it, and there's nothing in the project that, that's gonna be proposed in the project that this can't be done eventually. So, you know, that, that will come forward in our recommendations, but it was the major thing, it was inconsistent. The last item-
Can I ask one quick question on that? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
The, so right now, along the trail, there are many, in fact, in, in the past, I think the exact condition of the trail was what you were describing. There were a lot of raised tree roots, a lot of trees directly adjacent to the trail. And I'm, I'm just curious, constructing it to a public street standard, which seems like it involves maybe digging a little bit deeper, creating kind of that subsurface or, you know, subfloor that you're describing, is that potentially dangerous to the adjacent trees? Because, you know, there, there was resurfacing recently and kind of smoothed out the existing tree roots, and I'm not totally sure if that process harms the nearby trees. But I, I, I'm just kind of curious, like, what the construction potential, what the implications might be of, of constructing to a higher standard, considering that the, it is nice right now that it's pretty shaded with the trees, and I would, I would hate for us to reach a situation where we unintentionally damage some of those trees there and maybe have to replant them in the future.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely think that's a great consideration, and I think Emily will touch on that.
Yeah, so we, excuse me, we have taken into consideration a lot of those neighboring trees. We have actually even pushed the trail closer towards CSX to be able to preserve those street trees, because it is a really nice existing canopy. So that is part of the reason why we are proposing the current SHA Trail Asphalt Standard instead of the deeper street, the street asphalt standard.
Thanks. So, so it, it may be, it, it, it might be the case that, that construct, that digging deeper and constructing to that level could impact some of the critical tree roots?
It is possible, and I think that would just be something that would need to be, need to be explored and presented. You know, exactly, are, are, you know, would it be impacting critical root zones to a much greater extent? And is it worth, is it, is it worth the, the effort?
Yeah. Thanks.
All right, great. And the last item in the master, master plan, the proposed trail has lighting proposed that will make the lighting effective along the entire length, which is fantastic. All right, so next, we looked at the 2024 Pedestrian Master Plan, and we found that the project is not fully consistent with the pedestrian master plan in a couple areas. The first one is, is key action B three, B three dash C, which is a recommendation to construct raised crosswalks at all driveways and at intersections between residential street types and higher classification streets through capital projects. One raised crosswalk is proposed as part of this project. However, flush crosswalks are proposed at Fenton and Tacoma, all four crosswalks, and Buffalo at Tacoma, the east crosswalk. The next item, key action P seven dash B, is to ensure that vehicular stop bars are located at least four feet behind the cross, crosswalk. There were several places where that was done. We just wanted to note that should be consistently applied. And from out of that, we're, we're gonna have a couple recommendations. One is consider upgrading the pavement quality of the trail to meet public road standards. All crosswalks within, within the project limits should be designed as raised crosswalks consistent with the pedestrian master plan. Key action B three dash C, B dash three C, and revised design to ensure that all vehicular stop bars are located at least four feet behind all crosswalks. Next, we looked at transportation best practices, which for this project included the Complete Streets Design Guide and the Montgomery County Accessible Design Guide, Guidance. What we found with the Complete Streets Design Guide is the project is generally consistent with, with the guide. There are some differences for this project. One, this, this corridor has a breezeway master plan, in, in the bicycle master plan. So the typical or default- So the typical or default bicycle facility is different, but it is generally consistent. Next, looking at the Montgomery County Accessible Design Guide, definitely, you know, the project needs to ensure that its design elements are compliant with the Montgomery County Accessible Design Guide and the Americans with Disabilities Act. Some of the, some of the recommendations in this guide, I believe, mirror some of the new, the new PROAG requirements. The following design elements we found were not compliant with this guide. The first one was that all crosswalks in the proposed design should use ladder-style crosswalks rather than continental striping. This was also a recommendation in the pedestrian master plan to essentially move towards changing the county standard in recognition of the fact that that's, that type of crosswalk has less visual problems with, with people with visual disabilities. Second comment is that every curb ramp along Fenton Street and Tacoma Avenue will need to be made ADA compliant. This is, you know, I'd say, in many cases, is, is, has been complied with, but this includes both use of directional ramps and appropriate design requirements. This is basically a general, a general comment. A more specific comment is focused on the intersection of Fenton Street with Tacoma Avenue, where one of the corners has a, a unidirectional curb ramp. And our recommendation is that, that the project should modify the northeast corner to provide directional curb ramps to each crosswalk. And if you look at that, that intersection, what that likely would do, it would likely shift both the east crosswalk and the north crosswalk a little further away from the intersection. Might require a shifting of the bus stop pad as well, and certainly would require the stop bar to go back a little bit. But definitely that is, I would say, a much needed improvement. This is a really wide, unidirectional crosswalk ramp. You know, and for people with visual impairments, you're pointing them to the middle of the intersection. So it's, it's, if it can be fixed, that would be great.
So just, so confirmation, what is shown on the right is what's currently proposed or what you're proposing?
It's what, it's what currently is proposed.
And then, just, could you go over again, what you're proposing with your arrow, like, how would it change?
Sure. So what you see on, on this corner, you see a ramp going to this crosswalk and a ramp going to this crosswalk. And you would simply copy that design and put it down at this intersection. So you would have one ramp going this way and one ramp going this way. And that change might require the shifting of this ramp and the shifting of this bus stop.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, from, from our review, you know, with the Montgomery County Accessible Design Guides, one, one of the, a critical feature is providing clear paths for pedestrians and especially people with vision, vision and mobility impairments. We don't want to make them go the extra mile to get to the same thing that people can get to. And so here, when we look at the, the proposed design, and let's see if my animation works. There we go. What we're recommending is, and you can see it in purple, we're recommending an additional sidewalk connection to direct pedestrians arriving from the south along Tacoma Avenue to get to the right on bus stop south of, because without this connection, they would have to go up here and then get to the bus stop, which again, for, you know, there's a little bit of, I guess, a logic, logical nexus here is that by making this connection, it's not, you know, and there, and there are other improvements that could be done. One of them actually could have been, you just extend the sidewalk out and make it a harsher connection, you know, a more, a more, a straight connection. But, you know, we think this, as sort of as a compromise, will, will work fine. All right, now I'm going to move to the environmental review. We did find that this project conforms to the planning board approved environmental guidelines for environmental management and development in Montgomery County. The property is located within the Rock Creek watershed, which is a use one watershed, a very important one, in fact. There are no stream buffers, wetlands, or 100-year floodplains within the project site. The soils in the property are classified as urban land and are not considered highly erodible or sensitive, and there are no known rare, threatened, or endangered species along, along the corridor. The project is exempt from forest conservation plans or, or plan requirements. A forest conservation exemption was granted under the provisions of Section 22A-5E as a state or county highway project, and the exemption was confirmed on March 16th of And so as part of this, the applicant is still required under Section 22A9 of Chapter 22 of the county code to prepare a plan that demonstrates several things. And part of this includes having a tree save plan and complying with mitigation requirements. Next, historic preservation. As part of the design team's due diligence, they did coordinate with the Maryland Historic Trust, which confirmed last year that the proposed improvements will have no adverse effect on historic properties. And historic preservation staff here in Montgomery Planning have confirmed that the project will not impact the adjacent Tacoma Park Master Plan Historic District, and that a historic area work permit is not required for this project. From the Parks Department side, I did mention that there is municipal parkland, but it's not owned by the commission, so there are no parks located within the limits of this difference of this project. So that leads us to our recommended comments, many of which I've presented already. So recommendation one, consider upgrading the pavement quality of the trail to meet public road standards. Two, all crosswalks within the project limits should be designed as raised crosswalks consistent with pedestrian master plan key action item B-3C. Three, revise design to ensure that vehicular stop bars are located at least four feet behind all crosswalks. Four, use ladder-style crosswalk striping rather than continental striping. And, and just sort of as an FYI, ladder style, it's almost like continental with the two bars along the side, so very, 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 very similar. Five, every curb ramp along Fenton Street and Tacoma Avenue within the project limits should be made ADA compliant, and this includes both, the use of both directional ramps and appropriate design requirements. Six, recommendation to modify the northeast corner of the intersection of Fenton with Tacoma to provide directional curb ramps, which is really just a application of five. And seven, to provide an additional sidewalk connection to direct pedestrians arriving from the south to the Tacoma Avenue right on bus stop south of Buffalo Avenue. And those are our recommendations. And before we, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, I did want to mention that one comment has been received, which should be in your packet, which really questioned the need for this project. I think what I will note is that this trail used to have such terrible riding quality, as Commissioner Lyndon mentioned. The improvements that were done a couple years ago are great. So this one comment sort of saying like, why? But that, that, that's the only comment that, we did receive it. I did actually receive a couple phone calls. People didn't want to comment officially, but they did say they were very happy that this project was advancing. So, back to you, Mr. Chair, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. It just had, is anyone from the city of Tacoma Park or what would like to say anything? Just giving you the opportunity, giving you, you took the time to come here today.
Yeah. Deb McDally, I'm the Housing and Community Development Director for the City of Tacoma Park. So what I will say is the city is very committed to multimodal transportation, and we have a number of these bicycle projects moving forward. I would say that the Metropolitan Branch Trail is probably one of our highest priority projects, given that it connects not only to the rest of the county up to Silver Spring, but also down into DC, which allows residents, students at the college to access a wide variety of different recreational, educational, and just spaces throughout the DMV area.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions. One is that, you know, first I want to applaud the city of Tacoma Park for, for making these proposed upgrades. It's really important to get people on their bikes or walking, and I, I've taken the Met Branch Trail down to Audi Field to see the spirit play a few times. So it was, it's, and, and there is that, it's almost that connection from Tacoma to, we need that piece finished, so it's, it makes it easily going. Could you just tell the board, again, the difference, the difference between, you sort of, would you call it a ladder crosswalk and what do you call it, conventional or whatever?
Sure, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can actually get a visual example of this, maybe from my chief. He looked like he was working on it.
And then while, while he's looking, I just want to say, Commissioner Lyndon brought up this, this sort of this, you know, this balance between making sure you don't remove trees to do the street, you know, like, what do you call it, public standard versus whatever? Normally when you, we do, some plans you have, you show which trees would be impacted, you know, the critical roots, you know, like I said, but I'm, I'm not sure that was shown here during-
It, it was in the, I believe it might have been in the plan set, but I think that the, you know, the difference in the pavement might have different results. So, you know, that part was not conducted, and, you know, that, that's why we, you know, we suggest, I, I would say we were suggesting this more as a future action. You know, we, we make these recommendations like they should do this, but we definitely feel like at some point, to comply with the breezeway standard, a better pavement section will be required because the trail looks great now, may not need anything for five, six years, but at some point, you know, and make, maybe back to the way it was.
Right.
And we want to make sure that we can, you know, get a longer life out of the pavement.
Right.
Yeah.
No, no, and I know it's, you're, you're torn because if, if you, if the roots push up through the pavement, then it forces the bikers to like say, I'm not going to, I'll just go in the street. So, so it's that balancing act. So, so, and then also maybe if there would impact a tree maybe too much, then maybe they can go around it or something like that. But, but I'm glad you brought it up. It's the balance you have to, to hit there.
And, and it's from the, the difference between the, the crosswalk types, continental crosswalks are those wide, white-
We have an image that we can bring up if, if you all are able to show Mr. Rexy's screen.
All right, so, you know, this is from the, I believe, the pedestrian master plan? The bicycle master plan?
The Complete Streets Design Guide.
Okay, great. And it shows the different, the different crosswalk types. The ladder is, is the, the type you see on the far right of the image. We have a whole bunch of different types across the county. On a lot of state highways, sometimes you'll see the zebra, and you're usually, the, the transverse is what I refer to as continental.
I see.
And so it's just adding lines. So people with visual impairments, studies have found that that helped them stay within the lines better.
Okay, great.
You know, their advantages, the transverse is extremely visible to drivers, which I think is one of, one of the advantages, is just why in Europe, that's the standard. But the ladder is kind of like taking two elements together and saying, it works.
Great, great. This, this is perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Are there any other questions or comments from the board members?
None from myself. I think it, I think it looks great and think, good presentation. Appreciate it.
Yeah, same. The, I really appreciate all of, as always with these kinds of projects, all of staff's really thoughtful comments and, and recommendations for consistency and also just best practices. And I think that, you know, even though to sort of come back to the comment from, from someone who lives in, I assume lives in Tacoma Park about the, the need for this, I think that the, the comments that staff has put forward kind of point to, although it doesn't specifically kind of, it doesn't create a new trail, obviously the trail exists right now, the surface is a lot better than a few years ago, it starts to get at kind of more, more recent emerging practices that we should do, including, you know, accessibility standards, which, you know, we're starting to try to do more and more because of the PROACT requirements or guidance. So I think that is, is a great addition here. I also really appreciate kind of the consistent recommendations for ladder-style crosswalks. And I'm wondering if, if there are reasons, it's great that we keep kind of putting, putting this forward and getting this on the radar, but I'm wondering if there are reasons why it's not part of the initial plans that come in that we review either from the county or, in this case, from Tacoma Park. Is, is it just that sort of the, the process started long enough ago before we started making this recommendation? I understand that once you start adding more, it's not exactly paint, but I'm just going to use the word paint. Once you start adding more paint, it does obviously add to the cost. I think in this case, it's relatively marginal, considering there are not many of them. But I'm just wondering if, you know, are there reasons why it's not proposed when we review the plans?
I guess the only, the only thing I could say is that from a recommendation in a guide to actually putting it into a design standard sometimes takes time. And also, we also have state guidelines, and the state guidelines sometimes conflict. Sometimes they catch up, sometimes they don't. So, you know, I, I think with something like this, we just have to keep, you know, raising the awareness that this is the, the standard that we want here in this county.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I don't have any other, you know, I would, the, the only other, I guess, comment I would, I would add now is, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with the first recommendation about the pavement quality, which is just to consider it, because I think that it, it's, it's worth at least exploring, as we've talked about, what it would require to construct to that standard and, and if we, if you think that it would actually disrupt critical root zones and therefore kind of really impact, as we see on the screen here, kind of the quality of, of the streetscape and the ride. But anything beyond, you know, anything beyond consider, I think, is probably too much at this point, but I think considering is, is, is fine for this project. So, so thanks. You know, it's, it's exciting to see the MBT almost come to full fruition after all these years. There are a few connections primarily on the DC side and also going up to the metro, obviously, that are still under construction, but we're so close. And this stretch has, for many years, kind of felt nice and beautiful, but it hasn't been particularly ridable. It's been walkable, but because of the raised roots, it hasn't been ridable for most riders. And to the chair's point, they've just gone in the street. So it's already in a much better place. I think this will continue to move it forward and make it kind of a super high-quality trail that, that is comfortable for everyone and the consistent, with a more consistent width, because there are a lot of people who walk in this area, you know, Montgomery College has their campus nearby. Obviously, it's close to metro. So although we, although there isn't enough room to sort of make it, as you mentioned, kind of the, the, the preferred kind of width for a breezeway with separation for pedestrians and bikes, I think the more consistent width throughout will at least get us part of the way there. So thanks to Tacoma Park for pushing this project forward.
And one of the things I will mention is that as part of mandatory referrals just in general, is that once the board votes, we prepare a letter, which is then signed by the, by the, by the chair. It's sent to the applicant. We then ask the applicant to respond within 30 days of, you know, you know, of how they're going to address these comments or not. Of course, this is always, you know, this is an advisory review. Of course, this is always, you know, this is an advisory review, and we certainly appreciate their time and your time reviewing this. This is a great, another opportunity for public outreach for any capital project here in the county. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, hearing no other questions or comments, do I have a motion? Can you go back to your slide with the recommended, okay, yeah. So, I think we're good with all the recommended comments, so do I have a motion to transmit comments to the city of Tacoma Park regarding this mandatory referral?
Yeah, I'll move to transmit staff's comments to the city of Tacoma Park.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it for zero, so thank you, thank you, city of Tacoma Park, thank you, consultants, we really appreciate your time and your effort, and this is important in creating multimodal ways of transportation throughout our county. Thank you. And we're gonna take a four-minute break and start our next item. Thank you. Good morning, we're on item number six, Friendship Parcel 210 Ridgewell's Catering, preliminary plan number 120250110, with staff as recommending approval with conditions. This morning, we have Adam Bossi, the Planning Department, presenting this item. Welcome, Mr. Bossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, happy to be here this morning to talk to you about the preliminary plan for Friendship Parcel 210. This is an application by Morado Properties, they own the property, and the property itself is home to Ridgewell's Caterings, longstanding, it's a longstanding local business, and this is their commercial kitchen property. So, very briefly, preliminary plan is an application that's for a subdivision of land to create a recordable lot. Subdivision plans consider the subdivision layout, size, shape, density of it, road layout, things of that nature. They also look at master plan conformance, we're checking for adequacy of public facilities to serve the subdivision, and ensuring that it complies with the county's environmental requirements, specifically forest conservation, stormwater, and the like. Now, a record lot is necessary for the issuance of a building permit, and that's kind of a core tenet of what this application is all about. So, the location of the property that we're talking about today is in West Bard, this is on the north side of River Road, in between the Capitol Crescent Trail and Little Falls Parkway. The property is labeled here and highlighted in yellow. The Kenwood condominium is just south of the property, and Kenwood residents, some of them are here to testify today, and they did submit comments on the application. So this is an unrecorded parcel of 17,776 square feet, currently zoned IM. It's home to Ridgewell's existing catering kitchen, it's a 17,096 square foot building that was built in 1973, under the site's prior zoning, which was I-1. The site is served by two private alleys, Dorsey Lane and Clipper Lane, both which access River Road, as shown here in the image. These private alleys, note here on the slide, they have some unique conditions. These were established in the 1800s, prior to our current road requirements, so they do not conform with those. And through this process, we learned that ownership of the alleys is essentially unknown, these properties on them, including, or I should say, our subject property, we did find does have deeded non-exclusive access rights to those alleys, and we are working on the presumption that the other properties there have similar rights as well. They've all been in existence for quite some time, over half a century, and have been using these alleys for that duration, and continue to today. The neighborhood that we see here along Dorsey and Clipper really came into its current condition between the 1950s and 1970s. The applicant and Ridgewells own the subject property and some of those other ones toward the end of Dorsey and Clipper Lane, so that functions as Ridgewell's kind of business center there. They operate out of multiple buildings there. I want to show you a couple pictures here of Dorsey Lane and Clipper Lane as they exist here. This is Dorsey Lane, this is a 15-foot-wide private alley flanked by parking and the one-to-two-story tall concrete block industrial buildings on either side of it. Taking a look at Clipper Lane, this is on the opposite side of the property, it's also a 15-foot-wide private alley flanked by Ridgewell's properties on the left, immediately in the foreground is parking that Ridgewell's owns. The catering kitchen building is marked here as the subject property. On the right side of the image is visitor parking associated with the Kenwood condo, and parking associated for a church next door as well. So these properties, or our subject properties in the West Bard Sector Plan area, just highlighted here. The 2016 Sector Plan does provide a really nice history of kind of how this area evolved as an industrial area, and this is one of the few sort of inside-the-beltway industrial areas in the county. In the IM Zone properties are shown here in gray. Specifically regarding this industrial area between Capitol Crescent Trail and Little Falls Parkway, the Sector Plan recommends preserving the industrial zone land and supporting existing businesses, as well as attempting to attract new businesses to utilize these So the preliminary plan in front of us today is ultimately proposing to create a 17,766 square foot recordable lot from the unrecorded parcel, no change in the shape-size configuration of the piece of property. It is proposing a 10% increase in the gross floor area, so slight increase in the intensity of use. Again, we have an existing building of 17,096 square feet, and the proposed new facility would be 18,805 square feet. That's in addition to 1,709 square feet, that 10% increase. The use of the property is artisan manufacturing and production use, that's pulling forward from the food production and warehousing uses that were approved under the prior code. FCP exemption, forest conservation plan exemption, was approved for this property, as it does not meet the criteria to require one. There's no forest, and the property is quite small. We have several waivers requested regarding some of the private alley standards, which I'll touch on later. Those standards generally speak to new private roads as opposed to retaining existing ones, I'll speak to those in a moment here. So shown here is an illustrative redevelopment concept for the property, really intended to demonstrate how the proposal conforms with the zoning standards that do apply to it. So this preliminary plan is specifically designed to conform with the legacy provisions of the zoning ordinance, those are found in Section 59771C and 2, and these allow for a limited 10% increase in the expansion of floor area for industrial, commercial, or employment zone properties that were existing prior to the current zoning ordinance. You know, so with this, as long as the property does show that they comply with the I-1 Zone standards, which I'll walk through, they do, and they do not expand proposal of greater than 10%, they are allowed to proceed under the former zoning, which the building was built under, that was the I-1 Zone. So that limited expansion is allowed without a site plan at this point, should the applicant want to expand further in the future, I think a site plan would be required at that time. So as I mentioned, the I-1 Zone standards are going to, do apply to this project, and those have certain requirements for green area, height, parking, and loading. So this application will provide green area as required, that will be a rooftop amenity on top of the new building. The new building is not going to be more than two floors in height, and the I-1 Zone has a three-floor, 42-foot limitation, so this new building will be below that. 29 parking spaces are required for the new building. Those spaces are provided both onsite and in an adjacent offsite parking area, also owned by the applicant. You can see here, 29 spaces are required and provided. The offsite spaces will require an offsite parking agreement to be implemented, which is included in our conditions of approval that are recommended. The I-1 Zone requires sufficient space for loading, there's no numerical requirement there, and loading for this new building is going to be shifted from the Clipper Lane side of the building, where it is existing now, to Ridgewell's property budding the existing site here, so it'll be moved to the left side of the building. I'm gonna go back to that existing condition slide of Clipper Lane, so right above the label for Clipper Lane, you can see some of the Ridgewell's catering vans accessing the loading dock behind a trash compactor. That loading is gonna move to essentially where the large refrigeration unit is on the side of the building, over here, so just to give you an idea of how that will move. I do want to say regarding loading, earlier in the review of this plan, when we're looking at it, loading was originally proposed to be maintained in the same location, and at least partially in response to some of the feedback received from the Kenwood residents, the applicant was able to move that to the side to accommodate some improvement there of the loading. Again, site plan is not required for this application, as I mentioned before, and I do want to note that MCDOT, Department of Permitting Services, their fire, access, and water supply team, as well as DPS stormwater, have all reviewed this application and recommended Where we have these tight existing alleys, you know, access Where we have these tight existing alleys, your access was really a major point of focus of our review here. Shown here is the fire access plan that is approved by DPS Fire Access and Water Supply. So, despite the layout of the alleys not being up to current standards, County Fire Services has determined that they do have sufficient access to this. Generally, as part of access, the applicant is going to need to file and record various easements and covenants into the county land records to ensure access and maintenance responsibilities for the roadway is understood now and into the future. So, we do have multiple conditions recommended in the staff report that speak to those points. As I mentioned earlier, there are four subdivision waivers requested with this. All of them pertain to the private road conditions of the subdivision ordinance. So, this plan is continuing the use of those existing private alleys, and, you know, the waivers that they will need for those are shown here. The first two pertain to designing and certifying construction of the new private roads, or of new private roads to current standards. Again, we have existing private roads. They are not current standards, so the certifications really cannot happen. Regarding the last two points, these are plating requirements. Usually with subdivisions, new private roads are put into separate road parcels. Here, we don't know who the owner is for those roadways, and we cannot require them to be put in their own parcels. What's been done on other plats nearby is those roadways have been shown and labeled accordingly, and that's what we're recommending be done with this. So, some consistency and care there in how those roads have been treated on plats. Regarding the restrictive covenant language for private roads, again, our kind of standard language for that doesn't fit the situation here, so we've recommended the applicant work with the Office of General Counsel to come up with covenant language that best fits the situation at the time, prior to certified site plan, preliminary plan, excuse me. So, regarding noticing for this application, the applicant has met all the noticing requirements. The site has been posted. Notices were mailed accordingly, and after receiving some feedback from the community, the applicant did host a meeting with their neighbors earlier in August. As I mentioned, we did receive correspondence from some residents of the Kenwood condominiums. Most of those concerns that were shared focused on Ridgewell's existing operation. Things like excess noise, concerns with lighting, odors, trash, loading, access from the alleys were all brought up. Those concerns were shared with the applicant and with the Department of Permitting Services. A lot of those concerns, those operational concerns, are really best addressed by DPS. They're not subdivision ordinance issues. There were some...
We have Greg Nichols.
Oh, thank you, and we do have Greg Nichols from the Department of Permitting Services here to answer any questions you might have on those points. There were some concerns noted with noticing. If it was done appropriately for this application, and staff can confirm, yes, it was done in accordance with our administrative procedures, and there was some concern or request, you know, why isn't a site plan required? And as I mentioned during the presentation, this project does qualify for those to come in under the legacy provisions, providing that they do not expand more than 10%, and they've designed their application specifically to leverage those legacy provisions and move forward accordingly. Again, should they want to go larger in the future, the zoning ordinance would require a site plan. With that, in summary, the application does satisfy the applicable sections of the subdivision ordinance, and does substantially conform with the 2016 West Bard Sector Plan, and staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plan with the subdivision waivers, and the conditions is recommended in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bossi, for this very detailed and well-presented presentation. Next, we have some guests here today to testify on behalf of the condo association. We have five people. Why don't you come on? Maybe we'll take the first three, Claire Stannard, David Fresick, and Debra Scheinberg. Can you come up, please, to the... You can still come. We have seats here, okay? The other, the other two that I called, please come on up, please. You know, maybe why don't, they're going to, why don't you, why don't you step back, and then let all five come up? Yeah, yeah. And then Jerry, yeah, Jerry Scheinberg, and then Catalina Dutree. Everyone can come on up. All are welcome here. One, two, three. Great. Thank you, Ms. Stannard. You have six minutes to present your...
Do you want to push the button?
Yeah, push the button, and announce your name, and then you can present your presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And I have a real southern accent, so get used to it. Okay. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Claire Stannard, and I live at the Kenwood. As a former city plan commissioner of Dallas, Texas, I was shocked when I moved to the Kenwood condominiums, to wake up the first night with beeping of trucks, Ridgewell's returning trucks at midnight, huge, unshielded, unhooded lights blasting, beaming in my windows, and I'm on the 10th floor. There were open trash bins with swarming mice. There was outdated equipment that was so noisy, I couldn't hear anything. Four different sanitation trucks arriving before dawn, et cetera, et cetera. And what I wondered, as a city plan commissioner, was how in the 1980s was this able to be built? There was no compatibility standards. The Kenwood was there in 1967. 300 property owners that owned those condominiums, and there seemed to be, and for 40 years we have suffered this, the disruptions. I've gone to the management. I've seen the list of complaints, and unfortunately, they haven't been addressed by Ridgewell's or by Montgomery County in 40 years. And what we're facing is 40 more years if we don't have some input into this planning. While I recognize that Ridgewell's decided to keep their facilities at Dorsey Lane, and that's a great tax basis for Montgomery County, we are also taxpayers, and we deserve the same consideration. And that brings me to the West Bard Sector Plan, our master plan. I've read that in detail. I have read the 2014 code in detail. I've read the 2004 code in detail, and I've read Chapter 20 about roads. I take exception to Mr. Bossi's attributing that Clipper Lane is an alley. Clipper Lane in the West Bard Sector Plan, I believe, is stated as a private road, and as a private road, there are conditions for it which have not been met. But the West Bard Plan says in Section 212, "preserving compatibility with adjacent residential uses, and ensuring appropriate transitions to the edges, improving the quality of life in the West Bard, environmental considerations of noise pollution, light pollution, and air pollution, countering heat islands with trees and cannibes, all to ensure the quality of life." That has not happened. Now, I'm going to let, when it's their turn, I'm going to let my fellow residents talk about the noise issue, but I want to go now to when we talk about adjacency. What I don't understand is Ridgewell's claims that the Kenwood and Montgomery Planning is not adjacent to their facility and does not confront it, so they don't have to follow any compatibility standards. Again, there is less, it is not a 15, Clipper Lane is not 15 feet. We have gone out and physically measured it. At its largest, it's 12. At its narrowest, it is 10. All of the activities of Ridgewell's Kitchen is 30 feet from our bedrooms. 30 feet. They have all their deliveries there. They have their returning refrigeration docks there, where you can only get in them in reverse to leave Clipper Lane, because there's no turnaround. You have to beep, 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 beep all night long in reverse, and it is chronic, chronically blocked. But if, how does this not an adjacent residential zone to an industrial zone? Isn't that sort of finding a loophole to say, when no one really knows, I know in Dallas, Texas, your property line, and in many areas in Montgomery County, your property line goes to the center of a road. So, my presumption is our property line would go to the center. But since no one seems to know who owns this private road, then to say that we're not adjacent residential to get away from being, having compatibility requirements, I find disingenuous myself. But most importantly, to Mr. Bossi's point, when he talks about exemptions, I'm going to read from your code. I know you're aware of it, but I want to make sure that I'm citing it, and you know what I'm speaking to. It says for any site building that was before October 30, 2014, regarding exemptions, that they can avoid having a site plan approval process. It states, "Any structure or site designed, implemented, is conforming and may be," this is the key, "continued, renovated, repaired, or reconstructed." Well, is Ridgewell's application an intention to reconstruct a building, or aren't they proposing to completely demolish an existing building and build a brand-new 18,000-square-foot building on newly-recorded commercial lot with an entirely new site design? To me, the word reconstruction implies there's been a fire or natural disaster, and you are reconstructing a building exactly, more than likely, exactly how it was. Not that a brand-new building 40 years later is going up, so I have a problem with that. Most of these issues, have I done my six minutes?
Yeah. So, why don't you wrap up? Take...
Most of these issues could easily be mitigated by moving Ridgewell's delivery truck bays, their sanitation areas, and their delivery trucks to the west side of the building. Nobody's sleeping there at night. They have the other side of Dorsey. They've got a huge cul-de-sac for turnarounds, and that would mitigate all of this happening on Clipper Lane, which they might want, not want people to see, but you can screen that. It's easy to screen. Put it on the north of their building, not where we are. We are therefore requesting that you do require, in conjunction with this preliminary plan application, or either as an amendment, I don't know what your processes are, that there be a certified site plan approval required with this, so that people have the opportunity, that we're not living with this, we're 40 more years, and we have the opportunity to have input, even those delivery trucks are still too close to our bedroom windows.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm not a cowboy fan, okay?
No, thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we'll have David Fresick.
Good morning. My name is David Fresick, and I live at 5101 River Road, Bethesda, Maryland, 20816, in the Kenwood. As Ms. Stannard just mentioned, it's good to see you all. On top of all the other issues in regard to Ridgewell's negligence for 35 years, which are still unresolved, the Kenwood community contends and formally complains that we were not provided adequate notice under the Montgomery County Code when the original application for a preliminary plan was made in January 2025 for the major new building at the Ridgewell site. Ridgewell's, as we know, is situated immediately next door to our Kenwood residential building. The lack of legal notification from Ridgewell's in January 2025, when the original application was made, shows that the only notification to the Kenwood building was sent to a formal management company executive, who had been dead and deceased, obviously, for 20 years, and a former HOA board chair who had not lived there in years. Everyone knows that condominium management boards change regularly, and all someone had to do was walk 50 feet over to our geographic location and ask our front desk for the correct notification names. Ridgewell's attorney stated that he went instead to an old Secretary of State filing and used outdated contacts. Therefore, the residents of the Kenwood condominium had no opportunity to know that a new building was being planned on the present site. The postcard we received 10 days before the hearing was so vague that there were no details provided. If we had known in January, we would have hired our own land use attorney and organized a major lobbying campaign to fight for our rights as a community for a quality of solid, equitable life in a residential zone. We contend, and we formally complain, that we were not provided adequate notice under the Montgomery County Code of this major rebuilding of Ridgewell's, which is immediately next door to us with very little footage. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Debra Scheinberg.
Good morning. My name is Debra Scheinberg. I'm at the Kenwood condominium on River Road, apartment 1513. Mine is one of 174 signatures on the petition presented to you to ask for a certified site plan for this project, because our residential building is abutting Ridgewell's, and we are the ones with the most to lose. Ridgewell's operation creates excessive incompatibility with our residential area and negative effects. Since Ridgewell's has been using our common boundary on the east side of their property as their central delivery area, truck depot, and garbage pickup area, there have been no consideration of our residential property where 600 taxpaying residents live and try to sleep. While Dorsey Lane presents the welcoming side of Ridgewell's, the Clipper Lane side abutting our residential building is the proverbial sausage-making side of the business, with noise reverberating in our rooms, a noise-sensitive area, and lighting that is disturbing sleep and constant food smells. This map, Plot 2169, dated 1969, clearly shows the intended use of Clipper Lane, and this is, by the way, it predates the Ridgewell's facility, as access to the condominium, church parking lots, loading dock, and rear access for the 500-plus residents not to be a central delivery area for industrial facility with an improper setback and no buffer zone, and still none allotted for this in this preliminary plan, which ignores consideration for any modicum of harmony and will constrain us to more decades of negative effects that we currently suffer. This is one of the main compelling reasons why a certified site plan is needed. Exhibit A shows the noisy compressors, actually, this is the site, this is the noise sign from Montgomery County. The noisy compressors for walk-in freezers that run in what Montgomery County has designated as a noise-sensitive area. There's no turnaround for trucks on Clipper Lane. They must back in and keep the beep, beep, beep we hear all night and early in the morning. Excessive operational impacts. You see the bright lights, the outdoor lighting that create a bright glare and is incompatible with the residential area, and the unshielded noise and cooking fumes are all code violations per 2014 code. Exhibit B shows where the trucks are docked and where they load food for events and offload the garbage and often block the lane. Exhibit C shows the proximity to the abutting, there are 150 balconies facing this facility. This is an abutting residential building, and the mice and rats take advantage of the available food supply and infest our adjacent residential building. We want the offending parts of the operation moved to Dorsey, the legally prescribed buffer zone, and at least 1.5x the legal setbacks, and we want a certified site plan, so that the sleeping and quality of life of the Kenwood condominium residents are not constantly disturbed. Ridgewell's has demonstrated that they will not consider accommodating the needs of the residential zone next door voluntarily. In fact, at the August meeting with Concerned Residents, the principal and CEO of the company told us, "We should have known..." told us, "We should have known before we moved there that Ridgewells was there." And actually, we predate Ridgewells. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Jerry Scheinberg.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing us to speak to you today. I'd like to speak at this time about an issue with respect to fire hazards on Clipper Lane, which presents, which presents problems for trucks in the event of a fire in the Kenwood condominium, due to the restrictions of the width of Clipper Lane, which I will tell you I personally measured, and is 12 feet in some spots and 11 feet and 10 inches in others. Clipper Lane is a jointly-used private road of about 12 feet in width, separating the Kenwood condos from Ridgewells' industrial facility. Next slide, please. Since Clipper Lane is a private road, it must be built to construction specifications of the corresponding public road and must-
Sir, well, let's let your slide catch up. So, yeah, you can have a few more seconds. Why don't you go from there? Thank you.
Thank you. This is Clipper Lane looking toward River Road, and it must be built to the construction specifications of the corresponding public road and must remain open and unobstructed and used at all times as part of the project's common area. Next slide. Essentially, Ridgewells has been using this private road, that's looking down to River Road. Essentially, Ridgewells has been using this private road as their personal driveway for over 35 years, constantly blocking the road from use by the Kenwoods' moving trucks and deliveries, and preventing access during an emergency. And you can see in this slide, there are two telephone poles that are there, and it would make it extremely difficult, if not impossible, for fire equipment to get up there to a fire, and I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. Essentially, Ridgewells has been using this private road as their personal driveway for 35 years, blocking the road and preventing trucks and deliveries from accessing it. There are no existing pull-off delivery dock areas on Ridgewells' property for receiving daily food supplies. Clipper Lane is not configured to be a legal fire lane, as it must be for both the Kenwood and Ridgewells' safety. It cannot accommodate a fire engine vehicle, as there is no turnaround and not wide enough per fire lane standards for travel and operational access. Next slide, please. You can see in this slide that not only is there the width compromised, but with the Ridgewells trucks sticking out, I absolutely measured from the bumper of that one Ridgewells' truck, it's 11 feet and 9 inches to the wall. We do not have to rely on what ifs in this particular situation in an event of a fire emergency at the Kenwood. Let me give you an example that happened about two years ago at the Kenwood. There was a fire in one, there was a fire in one of the apartments, and about four different fire companies came to Ridgewells'. One of the fire trucks could not access this part of the, of Clipper Lane. Chapter 50 specifies that a private road be two-directional and have a turnaround area. Clipper Lane deadends into an extension of Ridgewells' building, requiring all vehicles to exit into the road. I also call your attention to a letter to Dr. Marie LeBaugh, Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services, from Mr. Stephen E. Crum, P.E., dated 4/8/2025. In it, Mr. Crum provides information as to how fire apparatus can have access to Ridgewells in case of an emergency. He specifically concerns himself with Dorsey Lane, not once mentioning Clipper Lane. Additionally, all of the cooking at Clipper Lane, all of the cooking that's going to be taking place at Ridgewells is going to be performed in this new facility right next to Clipper Lane. So fire safety and access on Clipper Lane is essential. Next slide, please. I was out there. I'm not doing calisthenics on this particular day, but I did want to show you that at the north end of Clipper Lane, this is what, this is how close and how narrow the road is. For all these reasons, we, as owners and taxpayers representing Kenwood's 500 residents, are insisting that Ridgewells pave the road for two-way traffic, and we are also requesting a certified site plan so that we can provide our input and corrections as necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Last, we'll have Catalina Dutrey.
Good morning. My name is Catalina Dutrey.
One second, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Catalina Dutrey. I've been at the Kenwood for seven years. I own and I live on my apartment that is face Clipper Lane. This morning, I'm going to speak about sanitation. For us in the Kenwood, it has been a terrible problem for many, many years, according to the people that I be able to talk in the building. At the present, we are having problems with trash and with garbage. We have to divide the names garbage and trash, because they're different. Here, you can see on Schedule 1A, and the trash that is being accumulated since July of this year. That was the first photo that I take out of my balcony on the 18th floor. The second one, the second photo, is the same trash can, still open, after a month that was taken the same day that we went for the first time to talk to, as a group, to talk to a race wall. You can see here the amount of trash and the container open without any solution to the, to whatever trash is put in there. Next to that, B, please. Here, we can see the gray container where a race wall use every time they have an activity, and they bring back the bags with the garbage and trash that is being taken out of the place where they've been working. This container is a metal container, and sort of press the stuff that is inside, I think, because after a couple of hours of putting all the stuff inside, grease and any other liquids that has been inside those bags are coming out of the container, and the low part. I think they have holes, or it's too old, or whatever happens. This, the next one, please. This big grease comeback one, I think. We turn around. You can see the grease in the ground, and that stayed there forever, because it comes, you know, every other day with the trash. So for consideration to the Kenwood, and to be a good neighbor, as Grace Wall said to us in the meeting, we would like to have all that trash containers in the new facility inside their building covered, not outside, where the rats, the birds, and every other animal can go and start pulling the trash out. So please, if they have to modify their plans, they have to be, to have all this trash inside a building covered, like we do in our building. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all five of you coming today. It's really important to hear from the community members, and as an adjacent property owner, we really appreciate you coming. So thank you so much. Now, we'll have the applicant come back up, and if there's room, maybe Mr. Nichols can So, welcome, and I'm sure you'd like to make a presentation, and this is your time.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good morning. I'm Chris Ruland with the law firm of Lurk, Shirley &amp; Brewer in Bethesda. We represent the applicant in this case, Morado Properties LLC, which is an affiliate of Ridgewells Catering. With me today are Susan Laz, the CEO of Ridgewells, and Pat Levey with McCrease Hendricks Glasscock, our civil engineers on this project, and we've got a few other members of our team here. We're pleased to be here in connection with this preliminary plan, and would like to start by thanking planning department staff for working on this and helping us through this process. We actually do agree with all of the conditions that have been proposed for the application. As you heard during the staff's presentation, Ridgewells has been in the existing building on the property since 1972. It serves as the heart of Ridgewells' catering operations, and it includes its kitchens, but it's fast approaching the end of its useful life. The, the application that's before the board today is for a preliminary plan of subdivision only, and so for that reason, matters of detailed building design remain to be worked out over the coming months as Ridgewells finalizes its plans and then works through the counting permitting process. But nonetheless, the application is an important commitment by the applicant to reinvest in this property as it's done for others that it owns on Dorsey Lane. This is a necessary first step, I think, in the big picture. It's a necessary first step for replacing this existing building with something better that's going to result in a positive incremental change in this area. So many of the issues that I think that we just heard about are actually going to be addressed with the construction of a contemporary building on the site, as opposed to keeping the operations in a longstanding building that's been there since the 70s. Before moving on, I'd like to give Ms. Laz the opportunity to make a few remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate being here, and I appreciate the Kenwood residents and their feedback. As they had mentioned, we did meet with them on Dorsey Lane and heard their concerns, so we will be addressing them. But I first want to just tell you, Ridgewells has been in business since 1928. Not many businesses can say that they've been in business this long, let alone 100 years, which we'll be celebrating in 2028. And as Chris has mentioned, I have been there. Yesterday, I celebrated my 40th anniversary at Ridgewells'. Back in 1997, I bought the company with partners. I have since bought out all my partners, except, with the exception of one, which is Jose Velado, who is a minority shareholder, hence the Morado name, because Morado is purple in Spanish. So Jose and I took the task of buying the property back in 2019, but to no avail. For five years prior to that, we knew our kitchen needed to be done and renovated, and we had unsuccessful attempts in the District of Columbia and Prince George's County to buy other property, but for whatever reason, it had always fallen through. And we always wanted to buy the property on Dorsey Lane. However, the owners of the property had an unrealistic expectation on what the price would be. After five years of sitting, not having anybody buy it, they dropped their price, and we were able to do it. We didn't buy all of the property on Dorsey Lane, because two pieces of parcel on the top, whereas is our existing warehouse and another metal building, was sold separately from a different owner. We bought 11 pieces of property. Why we're doing the subdivision process for us to change the property. So with that being said, we are listening to what they have to say, and back in 2021, we renovated what's on the other side of Dorsey Lane. We owned the three buildings, which was our laundry, our linen room, and some very old offices, and we had the ability to gut that successfully and have a beautiful 9,000-square-foot building, which I believe the Kenwood residents did show a brief picture of it. And unbeknownst to me, the lighting for safety reasons and security has all been upgraded on that Dorsey Lane side. So we have been addressing the lighting on the Clipper Lane side, and they're showing pictures of the Dorsey Lane side. So we will address that ASAP to make sure that there's no lights going up there. And we're also addressing the lighting on the caps on the other side. But again, once our, as Chris had mentioned, our facility is at its, its end of its life. Since 1972, when the original Ridgewells family built that kitchen, it's, it's really not in good working order. And our intention is to build a state-of-the-art facility that will have the proper ventilation, the noise control, the state-of-the-art equipment in there, cooking equipment. The compactor that she's referring to is a cardboard compactor. There's no liquids going in there. There's nothing wet going in there. And we plan on putting that compactor inside the building. I didn't interrupt you when you were talking, so-
Ma'am, please, please.
So, in any event, we want to make it a better facility. We want to make it, we want to make it more efficient, and, and we understand the challenges that we face sharing Clipper Lane, and we will, we will continue to take that into consideration when we design the building. So I've had my general manager of the property, Cheryl Hudson, has been my main point of contact for the last 15 years she's been with me, and she addresses any time that someone from Kenwood calls, I know she addresses it and loops me in on it. So I'm aware of what's going on, and, and some of these things that they are saying about us delivering in the middle of the night and our ovens going all night, I mean, there's just, it is, it is not true. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak, and Chris, I'll hand it back over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Susan. We're happy to answer any questions. I think I would make a couple of additional points. I think that the, the first one, there was a photo and some commentary about Clipper Lane. There is a pinch point today that happens where that, the wall for the Kenwood parking area sort of is adjacent to the, the property line, and there are some bollards past that wall that, that are, I presume are there to protect the Kenwood property line. And then the telephone pole on the other side, the telephone pole is coming out with the future building plan, so that will hopefully help alleviate some of that pinch point condition. It's important to do that. Kenwood is using Clipper for loading, just like we are, so it's good to, you know, make an improvement there that will allow for the better passage. On the, the notice issue, just to clarify, what we had explained when we met in August was that when the notices are prepared, as you all know, to find property owner information, you rely on the State Department of Assessments and Taxation database. So we turn to that in preparing the notice list. When you have a multifamily building, you also have the ability to notify civic homeowners and renters associations that are registered with the planning board. So we turn to, you know, the, the database of the planning board to pull that information, and that's what we used in this case. It has been my experience on other cases that sometimes those contacts are not updated by the, the owners. When we met in August, we obtained new information for current folks that are involved, and we're happy to add them to our list and keep them apprised of things going forward. And in general, Ridgewells would also, is also planning to identify and, you know, communicate an appropriate point of contact moving forward for the Kenwood folks, if they've got questions about next steps and process and that kind of thing. I think with that, we, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, and we'll sort of hold there.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much. So let me just kick it off. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I, I appreciate you being able to, wanting to renovate your business. It's, we, Montgomery County, we want to support businesses in the county, and I know after, this is an industrial area, you do have the right to be there, but it's important that we support businesses in the county. And I would hope that maybe one of the things you could talk about, the residents, also, we want businesses to be good neighbors with their adjacent property owners. And so, given this is an, you will be tearing down and renovating this building or rebuilding this building, maybe you can discuss how some of the, you alluded to it, but somehow the residents can- but somehow the residents' concerns would be addressed with this new facility. So, one of the pieces was about lighting. So, and typically, well, I guess with newer lighting, there should be meeting the current standards. I don't know if DPS will, when you review the new plan, like, will they be required to meet the, you know, the new lighting standards, meaning that the lighting should not be spilling out into the community, whatever? Tell us about the building permit process and how you will look at these things and what are the current standards? And so, and then that's about the lighting, also about noise, noise, how is that in the DPS standards? How about odors? You would think that with the new equipment, that there are some requirements about what can leave the property, what state, you know, so if you can talk about that piece, so we can just, the residents and we, the board is given, we are not, are necessarily responsible for that in this project because it's a preliminary plan. So, those are the, some of the things and I, regardless, we are encouraging economic development for the county, but we also have to be good neighbors. And so, also the, maybe later we talk about the, you know, I know, is, are there times where you can't have the beeping of the trucks going backwards? I know after certain times, if you can talk about the noise, the odor, the lighting, what, how will that be evaluated when you, they submit their building permit application?
Okay. Good morning. I'm Greg Nichols. I am the manager for the code compliance section within the division of zoning in DPS. And so, there are so many aspects of these concerns that technically really aren't within DPS's authority, but I'm going to give you, I'm going to try to give you an overview, okay?
Okay.
But I want a caveat that I do enforcement, so what you're asking is during permit application, how are they going to design this to address all these things? So, as he pointed out, they're in the design phase, maybe they already have ideas, but I'm going to give you an overview, okay? So, just for the record, I looked within DPS's database and we'd only received two complaints that were pertaining to DPS. One was back in 2007, was, it didn't even get into an enforcement situation. And then one in 2019, which was a fire code compliance issue. Fire code compliance is part of DPS's, we have, the fire marshals are within DPS. But it was handled and I think the, I could be wrong, but I think that the pandemic kind of delayed us going back out and ensuring that whatever they needed to address was addressed, but it was. So, that was closed. So, that's, that's the past, okay? If other complaints were lodged through either the 3-1-1 system that we have in the county or through the other agencies, I wouldn't know that. So, but if 3-1-1 got a complaint about noise, they would send that to the Department of Environmental Protection. So, to answer your question about noise per se, in a non-residential, and this is very unique, I mean, just my interpretation, you've got an industrial zone next to a residential zone. Usually you have some type of commercial zone next to a residential zone, but, so that, that is sort of interesting. But the Department of Environmental Protection on their website clearly point out that for non-residential areas, there's a, there's cutoff limits for 67 decibels during the day, 62 decibels during quiet hours. They define quiet hours between the hours of seven, or sorry, 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM on weekdays and 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM on weekends. And on the website, they do show a little picture of a trash truck. So, I would, I would confer with them as to, I think Steve Martin is my counterpart there in DEP. And he, they would be able to clarify exactly what the, you know, the noises that are made, you know, when, these vehicles, the commercial vehicles, I do know, because we do have to, we deal with this when we have conditional uses and things like that, that would be, that would be DPS. When we have certified site plans, that would be under the section that I manage. So, we are familiar with those concerns and, and so I can, I can tell you that, you know, hours of operation and that kind of thing, if, if, if that's part of, if that's part of the requirements of the project, then they would have to adhere to that. But that's not for here. That's not right now. That's not what we're talking about today. As far as lighting's concerned, the zoning ordinance in 59 6.446, basically, it kind of excludes commercial businesses from the lighting requirements if the lights are attached to the building. And we interpret that as, from a safety standpoint, if things are light packs or whatever on the building itself, they're exempt from all the other light requirements as far as spillage onto adjacent properties unless it's a conditional use, which this is not, then they would, then they would be. But I would say that in modern design and elements like that, you see a lot of shielding, you see a lot of, you see a lot of that in modern design, so that probably could be handled. I heard rodents, I know you didn't mention rodents, rodents would be actually under the Department of Housing and it's DHHS, Health and Human Services, sorry, not housing, Health and Human Services. And Chapter 39 basically holds an owner responsible. If, if they don't control the rodent population for whatever reason, then it would be, DHHS would roll out there and say, hey, you need to come up with a mitigation plan. What else are we talking about? The trash and/or garbage, that would also be, that would be DEP as well. Odors would also be DEP as well.
Okay, so, interesting. So, they, is there, and I'm just talking to this staff and also to the applicant, I know you want to be a good neighbor and you need to be a good neighbor. You know, you guys have been, you're, we want you to be in business for another 100 years and the building's going to be there with the units for, is there any way that you could, I don't know, how do you say it, commit to some lighting design standards that, that we normally have? I mean, I don't know what, that would minimize or, you know, what would you call it? That would keep the lighting on the, how would you state that?
Yeah, Patrick Levey with MHD for the record. I think we could commit to, it's typical, typically for a certified site plan, there's a reference to the IESNA standards for the applicable use type. I think we could commit to that here.
Yeah, and Elsal Heissler-McQuaid, Chief, West County Planning for the record. I think sort of the technology is sort of a full cutoff, so even for the wall packs, they can do it so that the light is going out and, you know, so it won't, it won't go up. So, I think there are technical solutions that I would expect with a new building they would be pursuing anyway.
And, but you would put in the resolution that you will do that and how do we, or what, how would you commit to that?
I think if the staff wishes. I mean, so there's a, there's a landscape plan that's conditioned to be included with the certified preliminary plan. We could add lighting to that and include the specifications on the lighting and landscape plan for full cutoff fixtures on the site so that it, they wouldn't, they would, all the light would go, would go down, it wouldn't go up.
Great. So, just give me some, I mean, when the other board members, I mean, not, just giving some ideas and you could talk through them. The other, the, it looks as if you have done something where you put the loading, some loading, you moved it from one part to the other. Can you, can you talk through that and how do you think that will make it, make the condition better?
Yeah, I'm happy to address this. The, just for full context, as Ridgewells has been working through the preliminary plan process, they've also been speaking with architects about how this building is going to shape up and they've made the decision to go with Gensler. So, I think that you've probably seen some of the Genslers work in the county. As I sort of said, the new building is going to be state-of-the-art and I think that the choice of the architect is going to be evident in that and it's going to have things like the, you know, the lighting condition will not be a problem because I think that's where Gensler's thoughts already are. On loading, it's a similar kind of thing. The decision was made, when we initially filed the application, the loading was kept on Clipper, just, again, we're not designing a building, we're designing a lot with the idea of keeping it the same. Midway through that process, the Ridgewells team determined, you know what, it would be better to move that loading to the side where we have the adjacent property to help keep the loading activities out of Clipper and therefore keep it clear from, from, you know, activity. And that was before we heard some of the commentary and so the commentary only reaffirmed our decision to do that. So, so we will be executing an easement, Ridgewells executed easement with itself to allow the loading from the adjacent side. As Susan mentioned, there's a cardboard compactor that's over there too, that compactor is getting relocated into the building. So, I think with, with those changes, it should be helpful for pulling some of the truck activity out of the Clipper Lane private road.
So, where will the refrigeration units go that were, out of curiosity, I don't know if you.
In the building.
In the building? Okay.
Yeah, everything will be in the building. I also might add, there's a little building that sits in the parking lot, which we're tearing down and not replacing and leaving that for surface turnaround space and getting in and out of the loading dock. So, it's just, it's just clearing that building out, so it'll give us more space. And we have said repeatedly to all of our vendors, there's no deliveries before 7:00 AM or after 5:00 PM. But as much as we can try to enforce it, they will show up unannounced and trying to get their route done faster. And we're at the, sometimes at the mercy of these deliveries, these broadliners, and we're at a point with them that we've, did something where they, they come over around the other side on Dorsey Lane, but we will not own those buildings in two years, our leases will be up.
Right.
So, that was just a quick fix for this, but for the most part, we have told all of our vendors that they're not allowed to deliver and we will continue to try to enforce that. And I also want to address the rodents. We have a contract with Orkin and we noticed since there's been a lot of construction across the street, a lot of blasting, that there was an uptick in rodents. And we have Orkin coming once a week to do daily spot checks and treatments everywhere. We're just as disappointed about the rodents as the Kenwood neighbors are.
Right, okay. One last thing and then I'll let the other, Sue, one of the things is, is communication. So, you know, that sometimes there are private agreements, sometimes they're just, to say that you will, you know, you, you've been there 40 years, the building's been there longer than that, but just to, maybe there's something where you can meet on a regular basis, you know, like twice a year. I don't remember what it is to, to meet with the condo association to just talk through, you know, are there any issues? Are there and how do you, how are things going? How's, you know, and so, versus only when there are issues and maybe, I don't know how, is there, is, I don't think that's happening now, but I think that that could, how do we, you know, you're private, to just meet on a regular basis.
Hey, I can't fix what I don't know about and so I would totally be in favor of that. You know, it's, we want to be good neighbors. We are good neighbors with everybody else and I thought we were good neighbors with Kenwood, but apparently not. But I think that's a great idea.
All right, so those are some of my comments for now. I'd like the other board members to.
Well, thanks for the presentation. Staff did an outstanding job in this and it's obvious that you worked in a collaborative effort with Ridgewells and you took into the citizens' concerns. I'd like to thank the citizens for appearing today, expressing their concerns. But one of the exciting things about this business is that it's a legendary Maryland business located in Montgomery County and the owner of the business is here and she's invested her time, effort, and energies in continuing the successful legendary business here in Maryland. There was a point that I was looking for is how many people the business employs and what the expansion could mean for the county in terms of employment, profitability, but because we know the business has been here for 100 years and we hope that it continues to be here for 100 years, that the result would be positive employment impact on the community. It looks like both the business, building, and the adjacent community have coexisted for a number of years. And now, what I find curious is that Mr. Nichols is here today and he testified, presented evidence that there have only been two complaints and that there's no violations by Ridgewells with regards to their existing business or penalties. There's no evidence of that that has been presented to us here today. One of the things I'm concerned about is that when we have a legendary business in Montgomery County that decided to stay in Montgomery County and invest in Montgomery County and purchase property in Montgomery County and then seeks to improve the existing business in the original footprint, that citizens will take the opportunity to take advantage of this improvement and our deliberative process to harm and/or injure the business and frustrate the business's existence and expansion. And because Ridgewells has invested in the county, you know, I find it curious that, you know, meaningful expansion, renovation, and improvement has given the opportunity for citizens to complain and/or frustrate the business and that is a concern of mine. If it was new construction in a new area and we're seeking a zoning change, I think that would be of concern to me, but we're not seeking a zoning change. And the staff pointed out that there's a legacy standard and that they can proceed because the 10% or less of the existing footprint is being used in their compliance with previous zoning standards. I'm interested in the success of this business in particular because it's woman and minority owned and they're not in violation of any regulation, no DPS violations, no legal violations. And, you know, it's a fortunate, unfortunate, it's fortunate that we have a business located in an urban district where people live and can easily commute to, but it's unfortunate that there are neighbors who don't like the existence of the business and it interferes with the esoteric enjoyment of their adjacent property. I'm in support of the staff recommendations and I look forward to Ridgewells continuing to be successful in Montgomery County for years to come. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hedrick or Mr. Linden, any comments or questions from your part?
Just for me, I think the applicant has answered most of the concerns that were brought up by the residents, which again, I agree largely with Commissioner Bartley on that. I appreciate them showing up, but I think the applicants addressed most of the concerns. We've moved the, moved some of the loading around, we've moved some of the, they seem to be addressing the rodent and lighting issues. I think the rebuild will probably address most of those issues and actually make it a better experience back and forth. And I think to the point of the person that was testifying about DPS, some of this is code enforcement and is not really addressed with us here and I think the applicants addressed most of the issues. So, I'm inclined to support the staff recommendation as well.
Great. Commissioner London.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for being here, obviously, and I do sympathize with a lot of the residents' concerns that you've raised. I truly do and I think it speaks to some of the challenges associated with kind of having adjacent sites like this. And similarly, I appreciate everything you've spoken about with the applicant, how you intend to address a lot of those concerns and like Commissioner Hedrick said, and I also agree with a lot of what Commissioner Bartley said, I think that it's, it's what we've seen here today, what we've heard, what we know about typical improvements like this, like we've heard from staff. It seems very plausible, very likely that these improvements, this new building and the other improvements you've talked about, will, will address a lot of your concerns. To the extent that you have, you know, the specific points, you know, like Commissioner Hedrick said, unfortunately, it's not really within our purview to speak to those, some of those issues today, but again, I think I'm comfortable that this new building, the new design, the architect that you mentioned that sort of thinks through these issues a lot, the provision that we talked about with, with adding lighting to the landscape plan, the type of lighting, the relocation of the loading, taking down the building to make loading easier, among other things. It seems as though, you know, obviously the, the project is being undertaken to support the business and that's, that's great. It seems as though, in addition to that, it will also provide an improvement over the status quo and hopefully a pretty dramatic improvement. So, I know that this is often a concern that, you know, when we think about, you know, when there's existing concerns, there's concerns that. when there's existing concerns, there's concerns that they, you know, there's a fear that'll continue on into the future. I think this is one of those situations where the building is so old, you know, it doesn't meet modern standards in a lot of different ways, and that improving it will be a giant leap forward and help the business itself be a better neighbor to the residents and to others. So, yeah, I support all of staff's recommendations, and, but similarly, I also think that, you know, more communication, like the chair mentioned, regular communication, obviously, will help with these things. There's no reason why that can't happen, there's no reason why things need to come to a head in the future if there are concerns, so, yeah, that's, those are all my comments.
Well, I thank my fellow board members for all their comments. Yeah, the goal is here, and I hope that some of the community members can see that we feel and generally feel that having a state-of-the-art building will help reduce some of your concerns, and including moving the loading. And I know that the lighting will be better, but we will put in the, in our recommendation that, that in the preliminary plan, that they have some lighting standards that we normally would have if we had a site plan. So we're looking forward to, also, it is important that we, that you talk, continue to talk on a regular basis, whether, and I know you may have community, you have, I know, condo association meetings, maybe every, you know, twice a year that you, that the Ridge Wells will be there, and you can invite DPS, so that you can, now you have all the parties at the table, and DP, and talk through that, because we want also you to be good neighbors. And so, that being said, do I have a recommendation to, a motion to move forward with, let me just say this, with the preliminary plan approval, with conditions, including the condition of putting our recommendation for the lighting in the preliminary plan? And then also, I don't know how we, I don't...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me, sorry. Matthew Mills, General Counsel's Office. We, conditioning a meeting between outside parties is beyond the enforceable condition power of this board. If the applicant is committing to that on the record in front of the planning board today, that is great. Usually how this works is even if it's beyond the enforceable condition power of the board, in most times applicants seem to come back at some point, because inevitably, people need something else. So you understand what I'm saying here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we can't condition that, but if the applicant is committing to that on the record here before the board, that's about the best we can do, and it would be the expectation, obviously, that that would occur.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And the applicant is nodding their head in agreement. We, yeah, yeah. Just, but for the record, do you agree with, okay, great.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So the motion...
And I'll even bring snacks.
Okay, great, great.
And Mr. Chair, the motion needs to include the waivers.
Oh, and also include the waivers as outlined in the staff's report.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the preliminary plan with conditions, also the waivers, and the additional provision or condition about the lighting, however we want to handle that. And I believe that that covers everything.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, four zero. Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing rebuilding a business in the county, and looking forward to you working with our, your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break and start with our next item, item number seven, and item number eight. Seven is ZTA 2511, and eight is SRA 2502. Thank you. Good morning. We're on items seven and eight. Item seven is ZTA 2511, temporary commercial uses, temporary telecommunications facility. And item eight is SRA 2502, technical review, optional method workforce housing development. And both of these, staff is recommending that the planning board transmit comments to the district council. And this morning, we have Ben Burbert from the Planning Department presenting these two items. Welcome, Mr. Burbert.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, I'm Ben Burbert for the record with the Design, Placemaking, and Policy Division. We are going to start with ZTA 2511, temporary commercial uses, temporary telecommunications facility. Staff is recommending the board support this ZTA with one very minor revision, which we will get to. The gist of this ZTA is it creates a new use for the temporary telecommunications facility, allows it as a limited use in all zones, and creates the new limited use standards with which this use must follow. This was introduced on July 22nd of 2025 by the council. It has an upcoming public hearing on September 16th. Real impetus for this is currently there is no such thing as a temporary telecommunications tower, and we're seeing more and more applicants coming in wanting to do something of this nature. Under current code, you can apply for a, what you may call a temporary telecommunications tower, but it has to follow the normal rules and procedures of a full tower, which includes all of the permitting as well as all the regulatory review. What this ZTA really is trying to address is it's keeping the permitting side of it, but it's trying to see, do we really need all the regulatory review that goes into this if it truly is temporary? Just as a definition, a temporary telecommunications tower would mean a monopole or portable wireless communication facility used to provide wireless voice data or image transmission within a designated area. A temporary telecommunications facility does not have a permanent location on the ground, including the pouring of concrete footing or the laying of a permanent foundation. This is just a summary of what's in the staff report. There's basically a bunch of use standards that would apply in determining whether or not this is temporary or permanent. The only exception to needing permitting would be structures less than 80 feet in height that are on wheels and that are to be deployed for less than 30 days. Those wouldn't even need a permit under this. All the rest of the towers would still need a permit, but maybe not all the regulatory review. Things that this really applies for and that we see the most often, if there's either, like maintenance, say, a water towers have a lot of cell tower equipment on them, and they need to repaint the water tower, that equipment needs to come down for a period of time while that maintenance is done. Oftentimes, a temporary monopole is erected right next to the water tower, and it's there for a year, and then the equipment goes back on the water tower. That's a temporary telecommunications facility. Currently, that has to go through Tower Committee, it has to go through all the regulatory process. It can be a little arduous for something that I think most people recognize really is just there for continuity of service. And again, there are setbacks that would be required, there's noise rules, all these things would still apply to these things. We're really just trying to be a little more efficient in process. The only recommendation that staff does have, if you were to read through all the standards, it says you do not need a permit if you are under 80 feet in height and you are erected for less than 30 days, and you do need a permit if you're over 80 feet in height and erected for more than 30 days. But it doesn't say what to do if you're under 80 feet in height but will be there for more than 30 days. Kind of reading through the way this is spelled out, we think that also needs to be just spelled out as something that would require a permit, and so we are showing that recommendation here and read on the screen. As with all ZTA's, we did do a climate assessment on it and found that there'd be little to no measurable impacts for anything that we study in a climate assessment. As I said before, this is not creating opportunity for new construction, it's just slightly streamlining a process that we already have in place, and by nature of these being temporary, any impact that may still happen, we anticipate would just be mitigated within the maximum of two years that these could be extended for. So with that, staff is recommending the board support this ZTA with the one minor revision as presented.
Should we vote on that now or wait till you get to the last? Only we just vote on it?
Let's just go ahead and vote on this one.
Okay, okay, great. So do I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation with that one minor revision?
Yeah, move to support the recommendation and submit comments to council.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Next item before you today is a subdivision regulation amendment, 2502, technical review, optional method workforce housing development. Staff is also recommending the planning board support this SRA with some revisions, which we will get into. Pardon, it should be that this SRA creates a new standard of subdivision that would prohibit the creation of flag lots, lots that do not abunt a public or private street, sometimes known as lots without frontage, or a three lot as part of any subdivision for optional method workforce housing developments. And it would prohibit the consolidation of more than three properties eligible for an optional method workforce housing development as defined in Chapter 59. You may remember that this was part of the More Housing Now package, which we talked about in the spring as two parts. This specifically was sort of the second part we brought a little bit later that created that new optional method development in Chapter 59. This subdivision regulation amendment's kind of coming in as a companion piece of legislation to that as a result of some of the discussion that happened during our work sessions on what was ironically ZTA 2502. sessions on what was ironically ZTA 2502. This SRA was introduced on July 22nd and also has a public hearing coming up on September 16th. Again, as I mentioned now, that previous ZTA, it established that new optional method of development. And as part of that, it explicitly prohibited allowing an optional method of development to apply on existing flag lots through lots or lots that do not abut a road. What this SRA was intending to do is to also make sure we didn't create more of those types of lots through this subdivision, trying to kind of close the loophole that was seen there. As a little bit of background, the section of code that's being amended in Chapter 50, Section 43(c)(1), it already requires the Board to make certain findings when approving flag lots or lots that do not abut a public road. In particular, flag lots, you need to make a finding that there's unusual topography, environmental conditions, or the position of the track in relation to sounding properties or rights of way. Make flag lots sort of the necessary outcome. And you have to apply an 80-foot minimum separation between the building envelopes on each one of the lots. Lots that do not abut a public or private road have those exact same findings, plus the requirement that you cannot create more than two lots without frontage at a time. And you have to show that there's proof of adequate access through easements across whatever property you are adjacent to that does have the adequate frontage. This is adding a new Section G that is titled the Optional Method Workforce Housing Development. And it says that notwithstanding any of those provisions that I've just mentioned before, any lots that are created under this optional method of development, the Board must not approve the flag lots, lots that do not abut a public or private road or through lots. And then again, Board must not approve a assemblage of more than three eligible lots. Just so that we all know what we're talking about, I've got a graphic here sort of showing a full block with four street frontages. And I've sort of put in there what a flag lot might look like, where you clearly have one lot that's behind another, but it does have that access down to the street. In the middle, we have a lot that does not actually abut a public or private road at all. And then what a through lot is, which is a little less of the discussion today, but just because it's brought up in this SRA, is where it actually has the two frontages, one on either side. In reviewing this, I think the intent is something that we understand, but we have some concerns the way it was written. You know, in a lot of the developments that we have, particularly in our R60 and to some extent our 90 zones, they're deeper than they are wide. And so any development of a particularly three or more unit type development, if it's going to be subdivided for fee simple ownership, it almost inherently is going to come with lots that either are in a flag shape or that will not have frontage. And getting that fee simple ownership is something that we really think is important to maintain through this. You know, we had a whole attachment attached to this about why condo development at this scale is very problematic. You can make rental work at this scale, but it doesn't encourage the homeownership that we're trying to achieve. And even that has some economies of scale that don't work out very well. And so we really think a very common outcome of this is going to be, you know, a threeplex or a fourplex type of unit where they manage to put all of them on ground floor access. And you could divide, subdivide these if we can make the subdivision rules work for us. Again, just some examples of what we're talking about here. The image on the left shows a typical R60 or R90 lot. The sort of thickest black line would be the existing lot that we have. You can sort of see the three-unit, you know, triplexes being shown here and how the most likely logical layout and subdivision of that would create two lots without frontage. The one on the right is showing a slightly larger tract. I think this was sort of assumed two or three allowed lots are consolidated up to the limit that the SRA would limit us to. And here, you could get even more creative and allow for, excuse me, in this case, up to 12 units. Again, most of them end up creating lots without frontage. You could do flag lots for some of these if you wanted, but either way, the way this SRA was introduced would be problematic for these developments. You know, the intent, I think to us, and we met with council staff and they agreed with, was we really didn't want to have the multi-unit developments placed behind single-family detached developments, sort of out of not wanting to have this method of development creep deeper into a neighborhood and create compatibility concerns there. But it wasn't necessarily, you know, nobody envisioned that, oh, we weren't trying to block you creating a flag lot or a lot without frontage for just full development of your on-light lot site. And so the first thing that we're recommending here is to change sort of subsection little one that we just referenced, that the Board must not approve through lots. That's something that we're going to keep. And then we're going to insert sort of a new code condition in here, that the Board must not approve a flag lot or a lot that is not a public or private road if it would be approved for a duplex, triplex, townhouse, or apartment building type to be located behind that detached house addressed from the same street. And so we think this really gets at what the intent of the SRA was while still allowing for some of the more logical subdivisions that we think are necessary to actually implement the zoning text amendment, which was recently passed. The other thing that we are recommending through here, as I mentioned before, there are existing findings that the Board has to make for flag lots or lots without frontage that almost inevitably can't be met, including that 80-foot separation of buildable area and/or the limit of no more than two lots without frontage at any given time. But again, you know, that was all written in context of thinking of everything's a detached house, more suburban greenfield development. And so in this sort of infill environment that we're really reviewing here, we also want to allow the Board to actually approve flag lots or lots that do not abut a public or private street without having to make those necessary findings. I think we've kept in here that you still should be able to provide proof of access and for utilities, personal access, and show all that on the plat. That is fine. And again, we're trying to write this specifically that it only applies if it's a subdivision for this optional method. We would not be changing the rules for single-family detached homes coming in through some other standard method of development. So if you take both of these recommendations together, we have what's on the screen. This is how we would recommend redoing this, this sort of new introduced section of the SRA. Again, you can see Section 1, just removing flag lots and the non-abutting streets and just have it prohibit through lots. The new Section 2 we talked about, where we would be allowed to do flag lots or lots that do not abut a street if it were not creating the situation of multi-unit buildings behind a detached home. The new Section 3 would allow the Board to make these findings without having to go through waivers to waive other sections. And then what was Section 2 becomes Section 4. We're keeping there the limit of consolidation to three or fewer lots. So with that, we are recommending transmitting comments that is support of SRA 2502, but with the revisions we've talked about within. And that concludes my presentation on this one.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. It's amazing how you've found out that by trying to do the, what we had hoped would happen, it created a flag. It, you know, so I'm glad you discovered that. I'm glad at this point, and I'm definitely in support of your recommendations.
I have a couple of questions, and they might not be able to be answered now, because in my own research and reading of this, I'm still not clear on whether or not this will disallow flag lots or allow flag lots and whether or not the language is clearly decipherable to the general public, let alone this board. So is the intent to allow all flag lots? Or is the intent to disallow multifamily dwelling units in flag lots? And then finally, you know, will this eventually lead to allowing multifamily dwellings in flag lots? And is the language able to be negotiated or manipulated by a developer to obtain multifamily dwelling units in flag lots? And so, you know, I'm uncertain as to the language and its specificity, you know, even from a legal standpoint. And I'm concerned that, you know, I could be championing something that I might be otherwise against. And so just from my own perspective and want to be well informed, I don't know if I could support this language today without, you know, meeting and briefing with staff as for more clear understanding.
Yeah, Mr. Burbert, can you put back up the diagram that would showed with the, like the triplex and then the other one, multi-use? And then maybe you can then go through Commissioner Bartley's question, because what I thought, Commissioner Bartley, is that, was that if you actually built what was on the left, right, and you tried to subdivide them, right, take them out, you're, it didn't start out as a flag lot, but you created a flag lot, right? The second one, you know, didn't, would be, and the third one would be like flag lots. But that wasn't your intent, you know, it wasn't your intention. But maybe I got it all wrong, and maybe Mr. Burbert can.
Sure. I'll actually go ahead and start back with this diagram. So the first thing that is already protected, because it's in the zoning code now for the optional method of development, is that if this diagram was the existing lot pattern, that flag lot and that lot that is not abut a road, they're both ineligible for this method of development because the site plan process is able to say, if you already have that shaped lot, you can't apply for this optional method of development. What we're trying to do is find a scenario where you're taking one of the just standard rectangular lots on the block. Let's, let's pick on the lot that's in front of the lot that does not have frontage. And you are then presented with the development scenarios here. So what we're saying is as part of a subdivision for new lots, you could not create a flag lot out of your typical existing rectangular lot to place a detached house along the street and your multi-unit building in back. But you could potentially create flag lots if the whole project were coming in as multi-unit development. And again, the scenario, when you have one existing lot, particularly in the R60 and to a major extent, the R90 zone, you're only really having room for one structure. It would most likely be what here is shown as sort of a side-turned triplex-type unit. And we do need to be able to create either flag lots or lots without frontage for that fee simple ownership.
Can you use your mouse to like, to point out, like, as you're describing it, use your mouse?
Yeah. And if I could, for the record, Jason Sartori, Planning Director, I just want to point out that what you're looking at with these diagrams don't actually demonstrate flag lots. These are lots that are created without abutting the applicable roadway. So just make that clarification in the terminology. And as you pointed out, demonstrate if it were a flag lot, how it could potentially appear on here.
Sure. Yeah, so we've chosen to show this here as two lots without frontage in the back and in the middle, and then one in the front with frontage. The flag lots in the discussion, because you could have the rear lot potentially have its lot line run down the front access on one side. You could have the middle lot then run a flag down the other. And we leave it open because there could be benefits to still providing everybody with frontage. I think the problem in our mind, it's one in the same, that whether it's a lot without frontage or it's a flag lot that you're creating, there was a clear intent by the Council not to have it, and this would really work on a larger site like you have in the back here, where you would have a four-unit townhouse, per se, being located behind, if these were single-family detached homes. That is what Council's intent was, that they're trying to not allow to happen. And, you know, we're in agreement with that. We are not trying to promote that sort of development either. We're trying to make it so that you can do a subdivision that doesn't have every lot, having normal adequate frontage on a street, however, that does incorporate some of these new building types that was otherwise allowed by the optional method of development, again, particularly our triplexes and townhouses. And so with the wording that we chose, that's why it's explicit to saying, again, existing flag lots or lots without frontage just can't do this. The zoning code's already settled that. That was passed. We're talking about a new subdivision coming in and somebody intentionally trying to create a situation where they want a detached home on the street and a multi-unit building towards the rear. And that's what we don't want to allow. But in both of these scenarios, there is no single-family detached building in front of along the street. On the image on the left, you have a single structure that's a three-unit building, and it has its sole presence on the street. The image on the right is showing three potential four-unit buildings, again, not behind a single-family detached home. This whole development still has its presence on the street. And so that's why we crafted the language the way we did.
Are you, is that more explainable?
It is. But, you know, I'd like to contemplate it more.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Linden or Mr. Hedrick, do you, any questions, comments?
Just a few comments real quick. First, I really appreciated the analysis that was included with the staff report to demonstrate, you know, creating small condos, it sounds like is already very, very hard, given existing sort of layered laws and regulations. I think clearly demonstrates the current, the proposed SRA would make it basically impossible, infeasible to do it economically on these small lots in particular. And so therefore, as you, as you mentioned, the preferable approach here is fee simple, kind of splitting up of lots for ownership. I'm sure there'll be situations where it's rental, too, but it clearly lays out why the current proposal will make that also either infeasible or just disallow it entirely for many lots unless there's, unless they manage to assemble kind of lots horizontally, it gets up to three, and then perhaps they could sort of stack it that way. But in many cases, that is also difficult to purchase sort of successive lots in that manner. So I think it, I appreciated the way that the report and the analysis laid that out, because I think it demonstrates that, given the current proposal, we're unlikely to see many units at all. And I think the intent is to see units in these areas of these different, of these, of this diversity of types moving forward. So I strongly support the recommendations here. I'll just add that I personally don't think it's a problem for, you know, different unit types like duplexes, townhomes, or small apartments to go behind single-family homes. I understand that it's not Council's intent in this instance. And so I think we're trying to meet their intent. And I think you've done a really good job of doing that here. And I'm also hopeful that if these, if these changes are adopted, accepted by Council, it will actually help to achieve their vision of what will get built on these corridors. And, you know, moving forward, as we talk about potentially other reforms in the county, like we talked, you know, earlier this summer about potentially single-stair reform in the county, the state is studying it now. I'm hoping that the county can move that forward, too. Different reforms or building type, or building code can also help to unlock other types, other, other building patterns that will just increase attainability and affordability of those on the back end. So, but this is the first step to making sure that that can happen in these areas. So I support these. And yeah, and hopefully Council will adopt these recommendations.
So thank you, thank you. So right now, Commissioner Hedrick had to sign off for quick emergency. So unless we have.
You still have a quorum, and thankfully, you're an odd number, so.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
One question before we move forward on this. Do we have a sense of how many, so total with this package, I believe we talked about earlier, many months ago, that there's something like maybe 2,000 or so eligible parcels on these corridors. Do we know how many are currently through lots? Are any currently through lots to a street on the other side? Or is this envisioning a scenario where the applicant developer would create a lot that would then constitute a through lot and trying to prevent that from happening?
I don't know if Ms. Givoni has, has numbers. I know there, I don't know if there's any through lots. I know there are a few existing flag lots along these corridors. And again, if it's already existing, it's already been taken out of the ability to do this through the zoning. This is trying to make sure a applicant This is trying to make sure a, a applicant doesn't maybe take an applicable lot and try to combine it with one that's currently not applicable in the rear and then say, well, it's applicable, my new lot fronts the corridor. This would say, no, it's now a through lot, you can't do that. So this was the council's way of sort of keeping this from creeping back off of the initial applicable corridor. So it's, it's really about new subdivisions mostly, especially the SRA part is all focused on new subdivision.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Givony, for the record, I, I, through the council process, we removed corner lots, flag lots, and through lots, and so we updated our numbers and we updated the map. One thing I do want to add for the people that are listening at home is we are working on a website that will share FAQs and the map and just talk about implementation of the ZTA to kind of make a one stop shop for people that are interested, the community alike, and understanding more about the ZTA and the SRA.
That's great, thanks. One other quick clarifying question for the, the situation where, the situation to prevent this, these, these building types and going behind a single family home, does that apply to an existing single family home? For example, if there's a large lot going backwards, existing single family home, creating a front parcel and parcels behind? And/or is it trying to prevent kind of total new construction where an existing home is taken down and then they propose a situation where there's a single family home abutting the street and then other parcels behind?
The intent, as we understand it, is whether it's an existing single family home that maybe is saved and there's room behind it, or whether it's all new construction, the, the council just does not want the multi-unit structure behind the single unit structure.
Okay, so whether or not it's an existing or new, it's just, okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, hearing no other questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve, to submit plannings, to submit the planning board, the planning board to transmit comments to the district council on ZTA, on SRA 2502?
Yeah, I'll move to support staff's comments and transmit those comments to the county council.
So, so the second?
You, you are permitted to second.
Okay, I'll second, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, so it's two, zero, one. So thank you so much, we're, thank you for this very, very excellent presentation to bring us up to speed, and we look forward to transmitting both ZTA 2511 and SRA 2502 to the, to the council, to the district council. And we're going to take a break and come back at, at 1:30 after lunch. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're on item number nine, Piney Branch Road Bike Way Mandatory Referral, number M R twenty twenty five oh two two, where staff is recommending transmitting comments to Montgomery County Department of Transportation. And this afternoon, we have Eli Glazier with the Planning Department providing this presentation.
Thank you, Jer Harris, members of the board. My name is Eli Glazier. I'm a transportation planner with the Transportation Planning Division. And I'm excited to bring today the Piney Branch Road Bike Way Mandatory Referral to you all. Just a brief outline, we'll talk about the context for this, for this project. We'll describe the corridor, describe the community feedback. We'll do our mandatory referral review, which is an analysis of applicable master plans and transportation best practices. We'll get into our recommendations. We have one person who has submitted testimony and we'll be providing that testimony here today. And then we'll get into the conclusion. So as I said, the basic context, so essentially today, what's proposed are separated bike lanes along Piney Branch Road from Sligo Creek Parkway across the Long Branch neighborhood to New Hampshire Avenue. Staff has recommended approval. This project is not subject to the Forest Conservation Law because it's less than forty thousand square feet. It has an approved stormwater management concept plan and M C D O T intends to complete this project before the Purple Line opens in twenty twenty seven, which is very important. Here is an image of the corridor. I think it's important to think about this project as it's, it's one project separated by a different project. So on this map, we see on the west side, we have between Sligo Creek Parkway and Greenwood Avenue, there is a portion of this project. And then the black part on this map is a set of striped bike lanes to be constructed as part of the Purple Line project. And then the project in question, this mandatory referral continues from University Boulevard east to New Hampshire Avenue as separated bike lanes. So I think important to know also is that this project is installing separated bike lanes on this road without widening the roadway or moving curbs. So everything's happening completely within the curbs. It, this project is very important because it connect, both because it connects to two bikeways that are already in design. The Flower Avenue separated bike lanes from Arless down to Piney Branch Road, which is shown as blue dots on the left side of this image, which this board reviewed as a mandatory referral in June twenty twenty four. And then east, you see that Carroll Avenue separated bike lanes, which this board reviewed as a mandatory referral in October of twenty twenty four. So we're provide, this project provides connectivity to those two projects. It provides connectivity at the east end to the Northwest Branch Trail and Prince George's County. On the west end to Sligo Creek Parkway and the Sligo Creek Trail. You may hear, have heard us, over the years, we have talked a lot on the bikeway side and the sidewalk team and on the park side and trail, thinking about trails and things like that, that Montgomery County really has a lot of very good, high quality north-south bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. But it really suffers when it comes to east-west options. And obviously, the Capitol Crescent Trail is an east-west option that we're getting back in circulation very soon. But this project really represents another, like, very high-quality east-west connection that, that really will knit together a lot of different resources in the Long Branch area and provide regional connectivity benefits as well. In addition to the bikeway itself, there's an ongoing M dot S H A pedestrian safety action plan project where this, where Piney Branch intersects with New Hampshire Avenue to improve the visibility and safety of that intersection. And then through the Safe Streets for All program grant that Montgomery Parks won, there is a future effort to redesign the intersection of Piney Branch Road and Sligo Creek Parkway, which is at the far west side of this project. So there's a lot happening in this corridor and this project is just one small piece of that. I'll take us through the corridor now from west to east. This portion from Sligo Creek Parkway to Greenwood Avenue is shown as two one-way, six-foot-wide separated bike lanes on both sides of the road. The buffers vary, but the bike lanes are six feet, the buffers are about three feet wide, made of concrete. And then the travel lanes are eleven feet each. The next portion, this portion from Greenwood's University is not part of this mandatory referral. This is what's being built as part of the Purple Line project, but you can see that the bike lanes are highlighted in green and they're just five-foot striped bike lanes, unprotected. Between University and Carroll Avenue, the same one-way, six-foot-wide separated bike lanes are, are in design. And then finally, at Carroll Avenue to New Hampshire, the project has designed one, two-way, twelve-foot-wide separated bike lane on the north side of the road. So it's a twelve-foot-wide bike lane and then a six-foot-wide buffer to separate from traffic. So in that way, moving from west-east, we have one-way separated bike lanes that transition seamlessly into the striped unprotected bike lanes. And then at Carroll Avenue, which you'll recall, there will be an intersection with the Carroll Avenue separated bike lanes, which are also a two-way separated bike lane. There's going to be a protected intersection at that location that will allow people to transition from this project's one-way separated bike lanes either onto Carroll or onto the two-way separated bike lanes that continue along Piney Branch to New Hampshire Avenue. This area is a mix of low to high-density multifamily housing, single-family housing. There's pockets of commercial and retail along this corridor. The roadway really varies from one twelve-foot wide lane in each direction with intermittent center and left-turn lanes at the west side to two twelve-foot wide turn lane, twelve-foot wide lanes in each direction with consistent center and left-turn lanes at the east side. Pedestrian facilities exist. There are consistent five-foot minimum sidewalks, but they generally don't have buffers from the roadway. I think what's shown here in this image is sort of a typical section, maybe sort of a worst-case section where you have a building to the right in this image immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. And then the travel way, the roadway is immediately next to that. So it can be a little claustrophobic as a pedestrian today in, in parts. And then there are no bicycle facilities along this road today. Community feedback, there was a public meeting about this project and the Flower Avenue bike lanes in early twenty twenty four in February. Feedback was largely positive. After we accepted this mandatory referral for review on June eleventh and provided appropriate notice, we've corresponded with one resident and received testimony from the same. And you'll be hearing that testimony today and it should be in your packet as well. In terms of our analysis, the controlling plan here for most aspects is the Bicycle Master Plan. I did speak to some other plans that are affected in the staff report, but for, for the bikeway, bikeway purposes, we're most interested in the bikeway, the Bicycle Master Plan. Just working through the corridor, the Bicycle Master Plan has identified, has master planned a side path on the south side from Sligo Creek Parkway to Flower Avenue. This project is proposing the one-way separated bike lanes on both sides of the street. Similarly, from Flower to Carroll, the Bicycle Master Plan has identified two-way separated bike lanes on the north side and this project is proposing one-way separated bike lanes on both sides. And I, I'll just talk about those two at the same time. I think there's clearly a difference between what is master planned and what this project is proposing. But staff is comfortable with the change largely because the Purple Line project's striped bike lanes, one on each side, it would be very challenging to transition between a two-way facility and those striped bike lanes and then back to a two-way facility on the other side. It makes a lot more sense as a user to just have one-way facilities transition into striped bike lanes and then back into the one-way protected facilities.
Sorry if you've, if you've already mentioned this, but for the, the striped two-way, or the, sorry, the striped one on, on each side, that's part of the Purple Line project, I assume that's going to include, it sounds like there's not going to be a hard barrier, but at least there's going to be some buffer of, maybe not a buffer.
As it stands today, what's shown for Piney Branch is there's no buffer and there's no flex posts. I think we do have a recommendation that I will get to, that there has clearly been a lot, since the Purple Line roadway plans were created, the school, the sort of best practices when it comes to bikeway design have evolved tremendously. We're talking like a decade more here. So what we may have been comfortable with, or the state of the practice may have been comfortable with back then, is not where we're at right now. So there has been some movement on other corridors in the Purple Line area to provide buffers, to try and provide some additional separation. And we do have a recommendation here to, for the project team, who's an M C D O T project team, to attempt to coordinate with, with M dot and the Purple Line project team to see if we can do something similar to provide additional separation.
Do we, I know this is sort of a, maybe a complicated question to explore, but after the Purple Line finishes construction, presumably sometime in the future, there may be an opportunity to, to rethink at least the striping, the lane widths. I, I don't know exactly what the right of way is on that, on that road, on that section of the road. And if, now that the tracks are in place, given the existing lane widths, given the right of way to curb to curb, like, if there's actually space to, to make something more substantial without having to actually like real, do reconstruction and getting into the sidewalk and, and so on. But so my question is, it, do we think that in, is it, is it possible for us maybe to explore a recommendation about sometime in the future? I know it won't be part of this project, but to M C D O T re-engaging on the section that this project won't cover to, to do our best to bring it up to best practices, at the very least, provide space buffer, explore protection, just try to make, make it feel safer.
For the record, David Anspacher, Transportation Planning Division Chief. You actually have a master plan underway right now, the East County, Eastern Silver Spring Communities Plan. There, I understand they're working towards their preliminary recommendations at this time. So that could be an avenue to, to explore this further.
Yep, that's a good idea. Thanks.
Eli Glazier again for the record. And then the last piece here, Carroll Avenue to New Hampshire Avenue is master planned as a side path on the north side. This project is proposing two-way separated bike lanes on the north side. And to staff's mind, the two-way separated bike lanes achieve the same purpose as the side path while also improving separation between pedestrians and bikes. So I, I think I would hazard that it's actually a better, it's better, a better facility for, for that corridor than the side path. This is the Bicycle Master Plan map that sort of shows, I'm going to try and, yeah, bring my cursor over. Piney Branch is sort of east-west here and all of the potential bikeway connections that are being provided here, some of which are existing and some of which are under construction. But this is a major east-west connection here. And I think if I didn't do it already, I do want to sort of laud the efforts of M C D O T in working with S H A on this project and getting the design to where it is today and where it will end up being. This is a very good project for, for the county and it really advances comfortable bicycle and pedestrian connectivity in, in East Silver Spring and in Long Branch specifically. On the complete street side, this road has three different street classifications, Boulevard, Town Center Boulevard and Town Center Street. This map shows where those are. Boulevard between Sligo Creek Parkway and Manchester Road, Town Center Street between Manchester Road and Flower Avenue, and then Town Center Boulevard between Flower Avenue and Carroll, and then Boulevard from Carroll to New Hampshire Avenue. I think the important thing here is that, I think while the default widths and different elements that are identified in the staff report are not, not always being achieved by this project, the project makes strides to achieve them. They're best practices for the different roadway elements. But I think this project's just limited in some ways because it really only is working between the curbs. There isn't any curb work to speak of. There isn't any, aren't any curb changes to speak of, which makes, obviously makes things like changing sidewalk widths or other things sort of beyond the scope of this immediate project. We do have recommendations in this staff report and this presentation to improve several of the complete streets roadway attributes, namely the protected crossing spacing and speed limits. Thinking about pedestrians, pedestrian level of comfort is something that we looked at. And I think we can, what we do know is that even without changing the sidewalk widths or the location of the sidewalk, adding separated bike lanes improves pedestrian comfort by adding a physical barrier between pedestrians and traffic. So we see in locations where, where the bikeways are provided, so between Sligo Parkway and Carroll Avenue on the north side and south side, we see improvements from undesirable, which is block four, to uncomfortable, which is obviously not the goal, but is an improvement. And then from Carroll to New Hampshire, we see the similar improvement on the north side because that's where the two-way separated bike lanes are. But on the south side, there's no change because there's no bike facility on the south side. Similarly, thinking about bicycle level of traffic stress, separated bike lanes improve a corridor. Improve this corridor, which doesn't have bikeways today. So today, every part of this corridor is scoring as very high stress, is high-stress L T S four. And in locations where the project adds separated bike lanes, that goes down to L T S one, which would be very low stress, just due to the separate facility. Similarly, Carroll Avenue to New Hampshire Avenue on the south side, because there is no bikeway on the south side, the L T S is unchanged. Into our recommendations, as I said, this project is, I think, in a very good place. But I think the recommendations that staff have compiled here would make it even better. A lot of these will require and would require additional coordination with the state on the design and potential signalization and things like that. So staff is fully aware of that and these are just in the spirit of making the project better. So this one overall is called redesign the Piney Branch Road Manchester Road intersection. Today, this is an intersection that has no traffic control, is very difficult to cross for pedestrians. It's difficult to turn from Manchester Road onto Piney Branch Road for motor vehicles as well as the, as the testimony we received indicates as well. There is a topography issue here that adds to the visibility challenges that exist. Staff would rec, would suggest installing a protected crossing at this location. So in addition to what's shown as a crosswalk on sort of the east side of Piney Branch Road here, we would recommend exploring some sort of stop control or traffic control here. Doing so would about, nearly have the, the protected crossing spacing distance here. Currently between Sligo Creek Parkway and Flower Avenue, it's about eleven hundred feet. It would cut it down to six sixty. It would cut it down to 660 or so, and that, doing so would also, it would improve how bicyclists travel. I think the arrows here show, the blue arrows show the path of travel in what is proposed for bicyclists on Piney Branch Road, and the red arrows show the likely path of travel for bicyclists coming from Manchester Road. And there is not really a good way for people from Manchester Road today, bicyclists, to get onto Piney Branch Road going east, so going like towards the Long Branch Town Center, without sort of cutting across traffic on Manchester Road and using the pedestrian crosswalk to enter at that location. Thinking about this as a signalized intersection, as a stop-controlled intersection would obviously make it much easier, and then providing a brake or a series of brakes in the buffer, in the concrete buffer on, in that eastbound direction would also be helpful as well. Additionally, staff recommends reducing the speed limit on Piney Branch Road east of Carroll Avenue to 35 miles an hour. This would match the target speed set in the Master Plan of Highways and Transit Ways. That would, it would be down from 40 miles per hour today, and we do know that any reduction in speed will improve visibility for everybody and will also reduce crash severity. The next recommendation in line with Commissioner Linden's point is just to work with, try and work with MDOT to add a buffer with flex posts to the striped bike lanes that are between Greenwood Avenue and University Boulevard. We know that support for separated bike lanes wasn't widespread when the Purple Line was designed. On University Boulevard, this graphic on the right is showing the design from University. You can see the blue area shaded near the bike lane on the right side is buffer space that they have in an updated design provided. And one of the ways they've done that is by narrowing the adjacent travel lanes. There are likely opportunities to do the same on Piney Branch, to provide some additional space that could either just be sort of a striped buffer space that doesn't have any vertical elements, or depending on the engineering, there could be the opportunity to add flex posts there as well. So, and this is outside the scope of this project completely, so I'm saying that here now, but just the continued coordination that happens between this project team as this project develops and MDOT, as they're coordinating sort of the trade-off, the sort of the handoff in this facility, it would be great to consider that as part of this. Similarly, where this, on east of University Boulevard, where this project picks back up again from the Purple Line, it would be helpful if we could explore providing bike way buffers and consider moving the westbound bike way, so the bike way at the top of this image to the curb side. We have here over six-foot striped bike lanes here, but they're unprotected for this, it's about 200 feet. So looking at opportunities to do a lane diet potentially to gain extra space back that could be used to add concrete buffers or extend the exist, the proposed concrete buffers closer to the University Boulevard intersection would be great. And then separately, it's a little bit hard to see in this graphic, but the, the westbound bike lane at the top is split, you have to, it's between a through lane and the right turn lane, which if you've ever biked in a situation like that is incredibly uncomfortable because theoretically, there is a space where drivers are supposed to cut across that lane into the right turn lane, but in practice, that merge happens throughout the entire length of the bike lane at any time. So if there are opportunities that can be explored as part of this project to move that bike lane to the curb side to eliminate that conflict, that would be tremendously helpful from a bicycle safety and comfort perspective. There are absolutely trade-offs there when it comes to sort of the University Boulevard signalization and all of these things that, that engineering judgment and things will have to dictate if that's even possible, but these are, these are things that we've observed. Next, it'd be very helpful from a pedestrian and bicycle perspective to tighten the curb radii at, I think, all of the intersections and driveways along this corridor to be in line with the Complete Streets Design Guide default 15 feet. The benefits of a tighter curb radii are a reduction in the turning speed of motor vehicles, and also it changes the angle that motor vehicles will cross, crosswalk or cross a bike lane such that they're cross, they're more likely to be crossing perpendicularly, so you meet a pedestrian or a bicyclist sort of in your windshield and not over your shoulder, something like that, so you can see a lot better. There are a number of specific locations where this would be helpful on the corridor. The Manchester Road intersection is one, in this graphic on the right, the Nob Hill Apartments driveway, the Pine Way Towers driveway, the Forest Park driveway. These are all locations where the current curb line is obvious, like there was a, a road diet was, is necessary to implement the design that MCDOT is proposing, so the curbs reflect the current sort of curb lane of travel entering these areas, but because we're moving, the bike way's going to move what the travel lane is, like where that is, these curbs could be reconstructed and provide the same access, but in a way that makes it safer for pedestrians and bikes to cross these driveways or intersections.
I like that idea. As a matter of fact, there's a, a school that was recently constructed that I traveled by, and I noticed that the curb was tightened, and it's taken me some time to adjust to it, but the genius of it is it makes it safer for the children to cross the street because you can't drift into the turn. You actually have to stop and then manipulate your steering wheel to make, complete the right turn.
Right, yep.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Bartley on that one, absolutely, that's right.
Next, the recommendation is to redesign the site access to the shopping center at the southwest corner of Piney Branch Road and Flower Avenue. You can see it in this, in the Google Street View graphic, you can also see it a bit in the Plan View graphic, but there is essentially at the Flower Avenue Piney Branch Road intersection, there was a right turn lane that has pushed the curb line back significantly in front of the shopping center, which especially with the topography here, can make it difficult for people exiting the shopping center to see motor vehicles, bikes, pedestrians coming up from the Sligo Creek area. So there's, I think, a number of things that can be done here. First, right now, you can theoretically make a left turn out of this driveway, which would require crossing multiple lanes of traffic of multiple different modes. So thinking about prohibiting that turn would allow people, it would essentially remove a significant number of potential conflict points for motor vehicles and for people walking and biking, because I think we've all been in a situation where you're trying to find a break in traffic to make a turn. You may not be looking at every single possible potential conflict. You're probably most interested in motor vehicles or other things that could affect your vehicle and affect you. So removing the, the inclination to potentially engage in unsafe driving behavior would be very helpful at this location and probably a lot of other locations. So looking at prohibiting left turns from this driveway, that could be done by putting flex posts or some other diversion on the center line here, so you can't make a left turn, and signage could also be helpful. And then in addition to that, we, I sort of hatched this red area in front of the driveway that identifies essentially where bikes and pedestrians are likely to be. So thinking about raising some of this to sidewalk level to make clear that pedestrians have the priority here and pedestrians, and, and drivers should be expecting pedestrians and bicyclists here would be very helpful. And then also the addition of green conflict markings here to make clear that there are going to be bicyclists here, and that people should take that into account. And then lastly, as I've said, this project is happening within the curbs. There may not be any, like, legal requirement to improve curbs or improve the pedestrian experience in line with the Public Rightsway Accessibility Guidelines or ADA or the county's Accessible, Accessible Design Guide, but if there are opportunities to improve, to make curb ramps compliant or add or improve other pedestrian amenities, the project should pursue those, because I think this is a corridor, there's a lot of walking and biking on the corridor, and while the, while sidewalks and the pedestrian environment exist, they're, they're not as comfortable as they could be, and this project does a lot to make it more comfortable, but if there are opportunities to do more, that would be, that would be very appreciated. This is just a summary of the recommendations, we can get back to if we need to. In terms of testimony, staff received testimony from one person about this project that was submitted in writing, and this person will present today at the chair's, with the chair's guidance. And then in conclusion, this is a great project that provides much-needed, low-stress, east-west bicycle connectivity through Long Branch, and staff recommends approval with the transmittal of comments. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glazier, going through this in detail. We have one person today, Ms. Suzanne Ludlow, to provide individual testimony, and welcome.
My name is Suzanne Ludlow. I live on Garren Road, which is parallel to Piney Branch Road between Manchester and about Flower Avenue. I appreciate that my home is close to many businesses and services, is well-served by buses, and will have two Purple Line stops within four blocks of my house. Despite these assets, Long Branch is not very comfortable for pedestrians, bicyclists, or those using mobility devices, which I used last year. For that reason, I've been very interested in the plans for bike and sidewalk improvements in Long Branch. I reviewed the staff report on this agenda item, I agree with it. I would like to share with you, though, a couple of aspects that were not highlighted in either the plan or the staff report, although Mr. Glazier's rec, mentioned them. First, my neighborhood has hills. The hill up from Sligo Creek is the reason the Purple Line is in a tunnel through my neighborhood. Traveling from Flower Avenue to Sligo Creek Parkway on Piney Branch Road is very much downhill. This segment is wide and curved, cars coming downhill pick up speed, pass around the frequent buses, especially those making the tight right turn onto Manchester Road, and due to this curve hill and wide pavement width, it's absolutely unsafe to cross Piney Branch Road at Manchester at this time. Cars and buses find it difficult to turn left from Manchester, I've never seen a bicyclist try it. I appreciate the plan's recommendation to install a crosswalk at this location, but as was noted, it will require a signal of some type to make this a protected and safe Second, there's little stormwater infrastructure in my neighborhood. I understand that no stormwater improvements are triggered by this plan, but with longer rain events due to climate change and with the hills sloping down to Sligo Creek, the amount of water on the roadways is increasing and may affect the bike lanes. During the recent major rain event that dropped over five inches of rain in my neighborhood, soil from your Flower Avenue urban park washed down my street, Garren Road, onto Manchester, onto Piney Branch, and into Sligo Creek, which then rose 10 feet in 30 minutes. The proposed bike lane medians are absolutely needed for bike safety, but I expect soil and debris to collect in them. And while I do not want this bike way project to be slowed to install stormwater controls, the county must look to, I, install those controls in my neighborhood. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My full comments are in my written testimony that you have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ludlow. We always appreciate testimony from the public.
Thank you.
Sue, I, I don't know if MCDOT would like to say anything. I see you feverishly writing in the back there, but if, you, you don't have to, but if you're here, if you'd like to say something, you'd, but you don't have to.
Rebecca Park with MCDOT Transportation Engineering Unit Manager. We reviewed the comments in the staff report prior to coming here. We will definitely consider all these comments, and we'll look into these comments, but we do understand that a few of the comments required approval from SHA, and we'll proactively coordinate with SHA to get this, a lot of issues at the crossings and other locations along the corridor addressed as part of the project.
Thank you so much. Sue, hearing no other comments or questions there, did the board members have any comments or questions they'd like to bring up?
Another great presentation from Mr. Glazier, and I would concur with the conclusion that this is a great project. Thanks.
Likewise, I don't have any additional comments other than what was provided in the presentation, the staff, and I think they covered it all. It was a great job.
Same. I don't, I don't need to belabor this particular item. Other, just to, I think, emphasize the importance of the recommendation at Manchester and Piney Branch, and I know that, that seems like it likely requires coordination with SHA to explore what type of protection or control is, could, could go there. But I completely agree with the residents' comments that, you know, that is downhill going in the west direction, cars do pick up speed around that bend, and I think that putting in a, a crosswalk there, even if it's a high-visibility crosswalk, even if there are flashing lights that don't require a stop, but just signal a yield, very few cars are, are going to slow down and stop for potential people crossing, and I think it's going to decrease the usage of the bike lanes going in the east direction up the hill, and just create a more uncomfortable situation for everyone. So, yeah, just emphasize, emphasize that point and, and encourage as much coordination with SHA as, as possible to, to get something better than just a crosswalk in that location. I did have a question about, so actually, sorry, there are two, two other very quick questions. So I, I agree with the recommendation east of Carroll Ave for the two-way on the north side of the street. It, it does feel like a higher-quality facility in, in all the ways you, you mentioned, but I'm wondering if there is, you mentioned as well that the pedestrian level of comfort, therefore, on the south side, doesn't increase at all because there's no buffer kind of space from traffic. I'm wondering, was there discussion internally around like that, that trade-off, and if it's worth it to explore a slightly lower, I don't want to even call it a lower quality, but a slightly different design for the bike way, protected one-way in each direction, if it could increase pedestrian comfort on, on the south side?
That's a very good question. That's not something that we discussed. It's a good question. I think, I guess, I, with MCDOT here, thinking about, we're at like 30% design right now. The, the, I guess, could you talk a little bit about like the design approach that led to sort of these preferred facilities? I think in, in the documents that we have, part of it came out of a, like the community preference for certain things and the continuity of the facilities, but I guess, was there a thought to, to one-way facilities east of Carroll, or how did that come to be?
Hello, hi, my name is Amanda Hadner for the record. I'm with JMTM, the engineering consultant for this project. There was discussion of some sort of facility on the south side of the roadway, east of Carroll Avenue. What a lot of the decision-making came down to in choosing between the different facility types was how they would tie in at the New Hampshire Avenue intersection, and by keeping everybody on the north side of the road, that's the side of the road that the existing trail is on, so it eliminated a potential crossing for people heading east on the south side of the road. It kept them out of that New Hampshire Avenue intersection and reduced the number of potential conflict points there.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, but it also, it, but at the same time, it introduces the same need at the Carroll intersection, right? Maybe, I guess the Carroll intersection perhaps is an easier intersection to design around. It's, maybe it's smaller, or?
It's a smaller intersection at Carroll Avenue, and it has the two-way separated bike facility coming in on Carroll Avenue, so there's already a lot of mixing potentially happening there, but it is at a smaller intersection.
Okay, yeah.
So why are you, so, I used to take that way to go to work at different, you know, when I worked. you know, when I worked in East County. But what is the side, I would just jump in the street because I didn't want it, as I was going, because I didn't want to take the sidewalk. But is the sidewalk there on the south side wider there? Or is it, or do you remember? East of Carroll going toward New Hampshire? You know, on the south, no worry. But I'm just saying, but I was just trying to think. Also, you said it was, you have the wider on the north because it's easier to get into Northwest Branch Trail. How did, I just, I thought it was always, how do you get into the Northwest Branch Trail? Is there like a cut-down as you get near New Hampshire?
Yeah, so just east of the bridge, there's a little cut-down trail off the north side of the road that actually connects.
Pretty steep though, right, to get down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, great.
Yeah, that makes total, you know, looking at the imagery again of that cut-down location, I totally get why trying to imagine crossing at that location, if it's one-way on each side, would be very challenging. I was mostly just curious kind of if that was a, if the balance of needs, kind of like how that conversation was considered internally. Because I think that a lot of people, you know, a lot of people are currently walking on New Hampshire, probably on both sides. And in the future, that may increase. But it seems like we're, to the chair's point, the sidewalk width right there right now is probably not up to the standard that we would build today. And although we're recommending lowering the speed to 35 miles an hour from 40 miles an hour, cars will likely still travel fairly fast on that road. So I was just mostly thinking through, like, could there be a benefit to both users at the same time? But I totally get the challenge of tying it in at that intersection. And then, sorry, one other.
Don't apologize, sorry.
One other question. Let me get back to my notes real quick. So you mentioned that the challenge of the little shopping center at the corner of Piney Branch and Flower Ave, kind of the access point there. And primarily because the right-turn lane is sort of recessed back as you're leaving, which means that they have to stop at that sort of further-back location. And I was wondering, again, this probably maybe comes back to SHA coordination. But I was wondering if a right turn, if a separated right-turn lane is even needed at that location? If that would make exiting that shopping center a little bit smoother and also make it safer for the facility that MCDOT is planning to build? Because it's a very short sort of stub right-turn lane right now. There's also a separated left-turn lane at that location and two through lanes. It seems like a lot of lanes for an intersection of that size. And I guess, I just realized, I don't know who that question was for. Maybe MCDOT right now. But if that's something that you've considered or if you've talked to SHA about?
We'll definitely look into this. I mean, as Eli Glazier said, emphasized, this is only 35% design. This is only a planning stage. So we'll definitely look into these comments and find the best way to address the existing issues with the, for pattern bike improvements.
Okay, great.
And if, yeah, and if the board's interested, I think we could, in the transmittal letter that we write, we could emphasize sort of the exploration of that. Because I think you're right, moving, if that right-turn pocket could be removed, we could, the bike lane design there could be changed and the visibility of that could also be improved. So if that, if it's, if it's the board's will, we can add a specific comment about that to the transmittal letter that we would send to the DOT, MCDOT.
Yeah, if other board members are okay with that approach, I think that, that sounds great. And I know that, I know that a lot of these changes also likely change. There's cost implications, and I understand that. And maybe project delivery timeline implications. So I get this sort of the balance. There's trade-offs with all these things. But exploring it, as Eli mentioned, I think that sounds great.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. So I think, thank you so much. And one of the things I just want to point out, how I'm really delighted then that all of this coordination going on to the planning staff and the MCDOT and SHA working together, you know, a lot of minds are looking into this. And this is such an important piece of the puzzle here. So thank you so much for working with each other on this. Question I had on the Manchester Road piece and then also the shopping center, have there, just out of curiosity, have there been any accidents created? Did also help inform the design? I mean, or, I know we should be preventive, but I just want to know, have there been any accidents noted because of either the conflicts or the steep hill and trying to, people trying to make left turns? If maybe you can, if you know there were some, you can let staff know. But just, I was just, I was saying, was that also informing some of this? But when I wrote this morning, I had to go down Sligo Creek and I, when I cut the Piney Branch, I looked at Manchester and saying, well, how can someone make a left turn out of here? And then it just brings up that, yep, they would either have to, if it's too congested, they would just have to walk back down to Sligo Creek, cross the street, walk back up to the, if they were so, so concerned, life and safety. So I agree that something is needed there to slow down traffic where there's a hawks or an actual signal or something. And maybe it'd be hard to get a signal there because, but whatever you feel can be done, that would be great at that location.
I'll speak. So for the record, my name is Huang Nguyen. I'm the project manager for this project. I have not had a chance to look at the crash data personally for this project. But due to this being a state road, the SHA might have a database where they keep all this crash data that we can look at. I will work with them on, you know, anything that we can do to make these intersections safer.
Okay, thank you. And then the last, it has nothing to do with your design, but it's mainly for bikers when there's the separated pieces. And if, about how do you clean them on a regular? I mean, I don't know if people are thinking about that because a lot of times you put in these barriers, trash builds up and it's hard. So as long as people are thinking about that and if there are, there's some sort of equipment that could clean out the bike lanes on a regular basis, I'm not sure who's supposed to think about that. But it would be nice if that can happen, yes.
Does MCDOT has some of those kind of very narrow sweepers in-house now? I think, I thought I remembered some purchases around that recently.
I do not have a knowledge about the maintenance equipments. But I mean, when we build the bike lanes, we do maintain them. For this bike lanes along State Road, I have to double-check who maintains the facility. But yeah, I mean, not just the trash cleanup, but also the painting, the green paints that go into, that are painted on the bike lane, you know, will have to constantly maintain this so that we keep up with the level of visibility.
Whenever you find out, just let us know, okay?
But I mean, I just, I would like to say that this is a great project. It connects the, we have Carroll Avenue, Flower Avenue, and, you know, it's just, it really aligns with the county's goal to expand the pattern bike network.
Yeah, we all agree with you. Go forth, okay? Yes, thank you so much and thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being here. So is there a motion to transmit comments to the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, including our, what was said about Commissioner London in the transmittal letter?
Yeah, I'll move to transmit comments to MCDOT, including the additional recommendation to explore removing the right-turn lane at the intersection of Flower Ave.
All second.
All in favor.
Did I beat Sean this time?
Yeah, he had his. He had his.
Because his motion was long, it threw me off.
You've been officially recorded as the second.
All right. I just want to make sure everybody knows I'm participating.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're just going to take a.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, two-minute break and start with our last item of the day, which is the master plan of highways and transitways, 2025 technical update, planning board approval of resolution of adoption. Where staff is recommending approval of the adoption. Thank you. Good afternoon. We're on item 10, our last item of the day. It's the master plan of highways and transitways, 2025 technical update, planning board approval of the resolution of adoption. And this afternoon, I've started out with David Anzbacher, who wants to give an introduction before we go into the actual presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate both Sophia Aldrich and Karen Gales-Dewar on the council's approval of the master plan of highways and transitways. This effort, as you know, started as a pretty straightforward technical amendment to the master plan. It got a lot more interesting once Mid-County Highway was thrown into the mix. So congratulations and thank you to Sophia for going above and beyond with all the outreach and additional analysis with the Clarksburg area community. A huge thank you to Karen. There's a massive database behind all this that Karen managed. She managed the comments. She put together all of the maps for you all to help explain recommendations to, so thanks to her. And then thanks to Richard Brockmeyer and Jun Yang, who aren't here today, but for all the work and analysis that they did at the last minute on Mid-County Highway to bring that to you. So congrats to everyone.
And Karen was also vital at all the public outreach as well, yes.
So thank you all.
Thank you, our greatest. Congratulations, and we really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. For the record, Sophia Aldrich from the Transportation Planning Division. And I'm really excited to be here today to present the resolution of adoption for the master plan of highways and transitways, 2025 technical update. So we did receive approval from the county council. And that is attached as, it's one of the attachments with your staff, the staff report. And I will go over some of those details. And then we have also attached with the staff report the draft resolution of adoption. And we're asking today for your approval to forward that to the full commission, of which we have scheduled a September 24 meeting, where I believe it will be a consent item. And we're, yeah, super, super happy. Afterwards, just for your information, we will be proceeding with completing the adopted and approved master plan and distribute it to everyone. And yeah, just, and Karen will be making a map to go up in our office that shows the new master plan of highways and transitways. So it was a great experience. All right, so let's start with quickly just master plan overview, master plan of highways and transitways. This is a comprehensive summary of all master planned primary roadway and transitway infrastructure recommended countywide. This technical update was necessitated by the passage of BILS 2422 and 3422 in early 2023, I think. And it is the master plan, our final step in converting street classification from the old method to the complete streets philosophy, which has a focus on street function and lane use context. The tasks that we were assigned through our scope of work initially started with tasks one through four to reevaluate the street classification, looking at this new complete streets, street types, identify target speeds for all master planned streets. Because, you know, as I've mentioned in previous presentations, target speed is a relatively new concept. And our more recent master plans did assign master planned target speeds. Our older ones did not. The third task was to establish a growth corridor area type and a growth corridor boulevard street type. This was not to apply that and make decisions on where they would go, but it was just to set up a framework for future corridor master plans to look at this unique area and street type along the growth quarters identified in Thrive, Montgomery 2050. The fourth task was to reevaluate master planned transit stations and transitways in coordination with Montgomery County DOT, their current BRT planning, to make sure that we have the right locations master planned. And then finally, the fifth task was added by this board, which was to consider the removal of the unbuilt, initially, it was the unbuilt sections of Mid-County Highway extended. And we ended up coming back with the recommendation to remove the northern section. And I believe the planning board decided to retain this southern section, which is the connection to Maryland 200. So through the county council, there were some plan amendments that were approved. And the first one was related to the scope of the transportation study. And so in typical county council format, we have editing notations where underline as additions and brackets are removals. So the first one was changing the southern limits of this corridor to go, instead of ending at Germantown, to go to Montgomery Village, which really covers the full extent of this section of planned roadway. of this section of planned roadway. And the last part was adding adding some consideration for helping to get this thing implemented or improvements implemented with the idea that this study is not just a master plan long range study, but it's supposed to help deal with existing issues, short term issues, medium term issues, and long term issues. So adding adding this this last part in here basically says the feasibility and timeline of implementing planned and existing master plan transportation improvements, really trying to say like, what can we do? What can we do soon? What can we do in a couple of years? What is there something contingent on something else? And if that's if so, let's let's advance those things. You know, because they don't want just another promise, they want a real action plan. Okay, on page 25, there was a an addition to recommendation 5B point two, which related to parkways. This this was actually something that was identified by planning staff at the Transportation and Environment Committee. And one of the reasons was that we've been in coordination with Montgomery County D O T, they're working some changes to the executive regulations for chapter 49, and they had a whole bunch of proposed changes to parkways. And, you know, we sort of we sort of looked at it and said, well, we don't, you know, we're considering actually not having parkways in our master plan, and that would save you the trouble of having to put the regulations in chapter 49. So let's let's add this in. So it's probably something that we should have brought, but, you know, I don't think we anticipated that the D O T would be putting forth these recommendations. So what this says is that several parkway segments remain in the master plan of highways and transitways despite council precedent, removing parkways from from the master plan back in 2018. Some of the segments currently classified as parkways will remain in the master plan of highways and transitways under different classifications. The changes may be made by this recommendation can be summarized in the following table. And what's shown here is this is essentially, I think, about three or four roads. Cabin John Parkway, which is the freeway section that connects the Capitol Beltway to the Clara Barton Parkway. It's currently a parkway, we're recommending to classify it as a freeway. It is a road that was built by S H A. It looks a lot like a freeway, and that would not have a target speed. Clara Barton Parkway, and this is pretty much the entire stretch of Clara Barton Parkway, it's not owned or under the influence by Montgomery County D O T. It is a National Park Service roadway. And so while it does provide an important transportation function and recreational function in the region, it's really not part of the master plan of highways and transitways, so we recommended removing it. Josiah Henson Parkway and planned sections of Montrose Parkway, we made some recommended changes on those as well, which, you know, the 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 change from parkway would be to controlled major highway and with with some associated target speeds. So those were approved by the council in addition to the planning board draft approved by the the planning board. The last item was in relation to, you know, I think some of the long the long range efforts in the up county, some of many several of which are contingent upon regional regional efforts. And so what was added into the resolution of approval was the following. Until the next countywide update of the master plan of highways and transitways, the council directs the Montgomery County Planning Board not to assume additional capacity from A, the third tracking of the Mark Brunswick line between the Frederick County Line and Metropolitan Grove, or B, the metro rail expansion on the red line between Shady Grove and the Germantown Mark Station when calculating the land use transportation balance in future master plans, including but not limited to the upcoming Clarksburg Gateway Sector Plan and the Germantown Sector Plan Amendment. The idea here is that these are these are certainly aspirational goals, but currently they're they are projects that are not likely in the short term, and they're not projects that we can bank on. We don't have control over it. You know, the Mark Brunswick line would require, you know, pretty much a change changing focus from M T A to to fund the the third tracking, which currently is not in their plan. And, you know, I I believe that the metro rail, there's been some pretty clear signs that the extension of the red line is not likely likely in the near future. So that that was added, you know, and I think it's definitely important because it affects two ongoing master plans. And with that, we move to the requested planning board action, which is planning staff recommends that the planning board approve the resolution of adoption for transmittal to the full commission for review and approval at its September 24 meeting. And Mr. Chair, if you want me to display that that resolution for the audience to see, you know, you you folks have it in your packet, but it is, you know, just, you know.
No, I don't think you need to do that because it was in the packet so everyone could.
If I could just add one thing, so Ms. Aldrich spoke about the the Clarksburg to Montgomery Village study. The council, Councilmember Valcom has introduced a resolution to add a special appropriation to our FY26 budget of about hundred of $100,000 to actually conduct that study. So the public hearing on that is on September 30.
Great, thank thank you so much. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution of adoption for transmittal to the full commission for review and approval at its September 24 meeting. Is there a second?
I will I will second if that was a motion, otherwise I'll make I'll make the motion. I'll make exactly what the chair just said, move to to do that.
I second.
Okay, great, moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it four zero, and are we is there any other vote we need to make today?
That is it.
And not even on the the proposed appropriation because it hasn't been appropriated, correct?
That's correct. You're gonna have an item on that on September 25, I think it is.
Yeah. Well, great, great. Thank you for all your hard work. It was a long haul, and I think we got it right, I believe. And so thanks, thank you. And this that is our last item today. I'm delighted everyone's here. We had a great board meeting and look forward to seeing everyone in a week. This ends our board meeting for September 4. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.